Call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. I apologize in advance, it's a long meeting, so we will go pretty quickly, but with the holiday and town meeting, we have two meetings in one tonight, so public input, if anybody's here about something not on the agenda? Seeing none, nothing online, Patrick?
Nothing online.
Okay, we move on to the student report. We have a new student before us, Nolan Pierce, class of 2027. We'll give the student report.
All right, starting off with academic matters, we have had PSATs last Saturday, October 26th, and coming up, the quarter will end on November 8th. Now going into fine arts matters, the Haunted Playground has been going on at the recently, and during the MICCA finals for marching band, on Saturday, they placed second in their division, and on Sunday, they had four stars overall and five stars in percussion. Coming up this Monday, October 30th, there will be the Broadway Cabaret, which is a solo show of singing various Broadway shows, so that'll be nice to see. For notable academic athletic matters, boys, both boys and girls soccer have won the Cal Champs, golf also won Cal Champs, while also placing eighth in states and first in the Cal Open. Girls cross country was fourth overall at Cal's and won the Divisional Sportsmanship Award. Girls field hockey won the Cal's, and all sports teams have had their senior nights. For other matters, homecoming is coming up for November 15 in Olio, just an external location in Peabody. The food drive has started, hosted by Student Council, I believe, and ends Friday, November 1st. And then this last week, senior superlatives came out, and this morning, they had their yearbook picture taken. Now moving on to my student work report. For my AP US History class, I was partnering up with a friend of mine, and we worked on developing nationalism. So each got political developments, cultural developments, and economic developments, and we had to go through them and explain how they created a sense of nationalism in America. So I had the Louisiana Purchase, embargo act of 1807, and the War of 1812. So we just had to give a little background and then explain how it helped to establish whatever America was at the time. And then we had to create a little visual with explaining this American system, how it affected each region of America, and then how it developed a unified sense of nationalism. And then finally, we're each assigned a person, and we had to explain how their works was contributing to America as a whole. So that was.
Excellent. Good job, Nolan. Any questions or comments? I'll just say your deck looks way better than mine do at work. And I'll just, since it's your first time here, just to get to know you a little bit, I mean, can you tell us maybe a little bit about you? Like, what do you do outside of this, your sports teams, fine arts, do you end up doing anything else? I'm just curious.
Yeah, outside of school, I'm on the boys soccer team, and then during the winter, I play boys hockey. And then for clubs, I do slam, DECA, Student Council, and yeah, that's pretty much what I do for extracurriculars.
So you're pretty bored.
Yeah.
That's great. Well, welcome, thank you, great job tonight, and look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Okay, moving on. We're gonna go a little bit out of order, because we have a few students here for trip approvals, and so I think the first one was for Model UN. Go ahead with your Model UN. Is your partner here still, or did, oh yeah? Should she leave for a second?
She had to run. We were, she had to run, she had some place to be.
Okay.
But yeah, my name is.
Oh wait, let me, let me give you, actually grab that microphone right there?
Sure.
It's not for in the room, but it's for the NORcam.
Yep.
You can sit right there, perfect.
My name's Rafi Toby, I'm a senior here at North Reading, and I help run the Model United Nations Club here. And tonight, we're seeking approval for our annual trip to the Harvard Model United Nations Conference, which is an annual international conference with students from all over the world for four days at the end of January into February. This year, the dates are January 30th to February 2nd. Usually, we leave during power block of Thursday, get our bags checked, miss school on Friday, and then spend Friday night and Saturday night, and then get back home on Sunday afternoon. The event is a really good experience for all the students involved, you get to meet people from different parts of the world. I made a couple friends last year, some from Indonesia, some from Brazil, so it's a really cool experience. You get to learn a lot, and I think it's a very good experience. This year, we're trying to bring 32 students, which is more than we've ever brought, so we're planning on having three chaperones that we're getting sorted out. We stay usually at the Marriott Copley at the Prudential Center, and we split the cost among the students, which comes out to around $450 per student, which covers the fee for registering for the conference, as well as staying at the hotel. And for transport to and from the conference, we rely on parent volunteers, which hasn't been an issue in years past, and usually, we sort it out ahead of time, so everyone's accounted for.
Whoever, whoever's speaking, you got it, okay, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead, Rob.
No, that was, that was about it. We've been going to the conference for over 15 years now, and it's a good tradition that we have within the club, great experience for people.
Excellent. Do you know what country you are this year?
We haven't received word. We still have to get our initial payments in, which we're collecting from people, and we'll hear back in a couple of weeks.
And what were you last year? Because Vatican was like two years ago.
Last year, Vatican was two years ago, last year, we were Vanuatu, which is a pretty small Pacific island.
Yeah.
That's an interesting part of it, is you don't really get a say in what country you represent, so you have to do some research and take on an interesting position.
Excellent. And in terms of your experience last year, I mean, I don't know, any, any takeaways for your life long term, like things you want to do from that, or?
It's not a career path that I'd want to go down. It can be a bit overwhelming, especially like when I was a freshman, I went as well, and being in a room with a lot of people and having to speak sometimes can be overwhelming, but it's definitely increased my awareness about the world, and it's good practice talking about issues with other people and debating, and you just learn a lot and meet interesting people from different places, so regardless of what you want to do, it's a, it's an important experience.
Excellent. I think it's a wonderful program and fully supported. Anybody have questions?
I would say if this is an indicator, your public experience, your public speaking experience has paid off, I mean, it's been pretty good to us.
Thank you.
Excellent. So can I have a motion to approve the Model UN trip this year?
Move, move to approve the Model UN trip this year.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. We have another trip proposal for Maskers. You guys want to come up? You want to sit there, or what do you want to do?
Notorious. I might have, I might have missed typed it in there.
Oh, is it notorious? Sorry, notorious, not maskers. You're all the same, I see you all everywhere. Notorious.
Just go around so you can hear, you have the mic right there. Perfect.
Hi, I'm Vinnie Costantino, I'm one of Notorious' co-music directors.
Hi, I'm like Manny Pelli, I'm also one of Notorious' music directors.
I'm Ullalia Aganis, and I'm Notorious' External Affairs Manager.
And I'm Olivia Rowe, Notorious' Internal Affairs Manager.
We're here to talk about the One Voice Invitational, which is a high-end professionally-produced event, providing an incredible immersive sold-out experience for every group that attends. It takes place at the Sparks Chapel and Performing Arts Center, just outside of Memphis. It will be on Friday and Saturday. All the groups that go there get to enjoy a lot of really fun and interesting classes, and you get to work with professionals in the industry who really help teach you a lot, and you can learn a lot with, if people want to go into music, they can learn a lot from these different programs like this one. It isn't a competition, but is a great start to the competition season for any group that attends.
And we don't only want to work there, you know, we want to have a good time, so we planned out this awesome day. We're going to Graceland, so we're gonna have a tour of there. We're gonna go to the original recording studio of Johnny Cash, Clyde Davis, Jerry Louis, Jerry Lee Lewis, and that's only a few names of like very famous artists who also recorded there. We're gonna go do a tour of the famous Peabody Hotel, and we're gonna see the Duck March, we're gonna explore Beale Street, and we're probably, we really want to have a BBQ dinner at BBKings. Hope for that.
So we have a group of 14 students and two adults who'd be attending this trip, so some of the costs that we've looked over would be for the flight, which was Southwest Airlines, four nights in a hotel, transportation, all breakfasts, one dinner, all the touring events, and also trip delay and medical insurance with coverage up to $100,000 per person. Some additional costs that we looked at, which is estimated at $150, is dinner at the airport on Thursday, and then lunch and dinner at the One Voice Festival on Friday, and lunch and dinner at the One Voice Festival on Saturday as well.
So some of the fundraising that we've been doing for this trip is the Haunted Playground happened, and as well as Compass Rose, and the National Anthems that we do for the soccer. We've earned money from these events to help pay for the trip. Currently, Notorious is able to pay $100 for all students, for a total of $1,400. Below are also some additional ways we can help support students paying for the trip. We have Fall Fest, November 2nd at 7:00 PM, we co-host that with Wakefield. Also, we sometimes receive help from the music boosters, we're looking for options to, with them to help defray our costs. And then parent-run restaurant events, we often do the Harrah's Pot Pie fundraiser, where we buy, we get, we sell Harrah's Pot Pie gift cards for $20, and this can just go straight into students' fees for the trip. One of our parents of Notorious is also trying to get together like a candy cane fundraiser, so we could sell those, and it would just go directly into student pockets and help them pay their individual fees.
For this trip, we're using Educational Travel Adventures as the agency. We called around 13 different places and groups, and narrowed down the best price and the best thing for our group. Really worked one-on-one with a lot of their employees to help figure out what would work best for the trip. We choose the date and the destination. We made sure we have online individual registration for each member of the group, to help make the fees not as cost-worthy of it. Also, if one of the chaperones is not able to make it, they will provide someone to go to help guide around and also be able to assist any of the people in the group if they need it. Yeah. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, my only, first question, so it's an invitational, so you, each year, you have to, you apply, you get invited based on your rankings, or how do you get invited?
So many groups can apply. If I am correct, I think there's a process that you got to submit, like a video of you singing a couple songs, but every group has to go through a full process to be told if they can go or not.
Excellent. And last year, where did you go? Did you attend this last year, and where was it?
This will be the first time.
First time.
Two years ago, they did the National Acapella Convention.
Florida?
In Florida, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, I have no questions, I support it, wish you well. Any comments, questions?
Sounds fabulous.
Okay, a motion to approve the trip to Nashville.
Memphis.
Memphis.
Sorry.
Both in Tennessee.
It's not maskers, and it's not.
I know.
Move to approve the, the Notorious trip to, to Memphis. I know, I almost screwed it up.
No, you almost screwed it up, but I said it. We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Next time, I would like you to sing your request.
Totally.
Come to the fest on Saturday.
Okay, now we have more trips, so we're gonna do Portugal and Costa Rica, and are you guys together on both of them, or no?
No.
Okay, Portugal's listed first, so we get Portugal first.
We will not be singing this. So we are proposing to go to Portugal in 2026 over April's school vacation. So we've been running the North Reading High School International Travel Program since 2015. This will be our, be our 10th trip, even though 2026, we lost that trip to COVID. So over the years, we developed these goals, and this is sort of like what we try to do while we're overseas with the, with the kids. And really work on this stuff in kind of small group discussion in the evening, and those sort of like conversations during the day. But the biggest one that I think we've noticed the most is that bottom one about navigating new experiences and adapting to change. I teach seniors in English, and I read a lot of college essays, and the kids that go on the trips, that, that they write about this, and it's these huge experiences, it's really cool to see as the, you know, the guys that get to do this with them. Some highlights, I'm from, from some past trips, some kids eating scorpions in Beijing, we made chocolate in the Amazon a couple of years ago. Find some really beautiful places to hang, this is a parking lot, but the, around us was nice. You know, to play hack, you could hang out, and there was one year, we, we found some kids playing soccer in Denmark, and they were very young, and we had a lot of soccer players, and we destroyed them, and that was really fun. So that was a fun, fun trip. So just fun, have these experiences outside of some of those usual, you know, tourist spots, it's just look at these things you got to do with your friends. Some of the itinerary highlights, it's, the, the trip is pretty much the entire country from, from top to bottom, or, or north to south here. Get to see a lot, do a lot of fun things, from cultural exchanges and different cultural evenings, which will be interesting, and some beautiful spots. The price is $4,300, this is pretty much what it's been for the past few trips, pretty similar in price, it's insurance, the kids are responsible for lunch pretty much every day, and tips for the guides, which is the same, it's always been for them. We're able to offer some scholarships, which is always great, and over the past 10 years, we've had over 300 NRHS kids travel with us, this will be our 21st country. We had a very successful trip last year to the Alps, and we're bringing a full bus to Greece this coming April. And there are 40 spots for students, and they must remain in good standing leading up to and through the trip. And that's, that's that.
Questions?
In terms of scholarships, how is that, what's the application process like for that?
So we've done a, a few different ways, we've done, you know, I don't want to call it a raffle, but you see, you know, when you enroll, you're sort of entered into this thing, we have a need, availability, availability to do something need-based, like through EF, we use EF. And then when we have a little bit more through EF, we've done like a question, you know, like answer these short essay questions, I guess.
Okay, all right. And so if someone wants to go and they can't afford it, there is a way for them to apply?
Yeah.
Okay.
How many students are generally interested in going, you know, the 40 spots?
Uh, we.
Full, or are you?
Yeah.
Turn students away?
Yeah, we, we have a waitlist most, most trips.
Is it first come, first signed up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. I'll just warn you, Portugal's a little better in soccer than Denmark. Be careful what you get into. Any more questions? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve the International Travel Trip to Portugal.
Move to approve the 2026 International Trip to Portugal.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Enjoy.
Good night.
Okay, and Costa Rica.
Dr. Daly, school committee members, thank you for your time and for having me here tonight. My name is Anna Yamas Flores-Quero, and I'm the World Languages Curriculum Leader, High School Teacher, American Sign Language Club Advisor, and the Spanish Immersion Travel Club. We, we took a group of students to Costa Rica in February Vacation 2023, and another group to Spain in February 2024. In both trips, the students had a great time getting to know the highlights of these countries. They got many opportunities to learn and do just like the locals do. They had a lot of fun, sea blading, horseback riding, learning about the environment and ecosystems, seeing birds, sloths, actually, in the middle of the road, we had to stop the bus until like somebody kind of like moved it, monkeys up close, visiting volcanoes, hot springs, taking flamenco lessons in Spain, visiting historical sites, trying delicious local food, visiting students at their, at their schools in both Costa Rica and Spain, and much more. Sorry, I was so excited to kind of like share all the things that we do. Today, I'm here to propose to you a trip for February Vacation 2026 to Costa Rica. Costa Rica is a beautiful country and has to, has so much to offer, so we decided to go back. This time, we will be visiting some new regions of the country. Yeah, this is a nine-day trip that goes to San Jose, Tortuguero, Sarapiquí, Aranal Region, Huancaste. Well, just a little bit of why we travel, I am a believer that traveling changes minds and gives students cultural awareness and a global perspective by introducing them to diverse cultures, traditions, way of, ways of life. I also think that helps them foster empathy, cultural sensitivity, and a broader worldview, something that we strive to do in the classroom, but some, but being immersed in the country, it happens 1,000 times faster and in a more fun way. So we chose EF Travel Tours as our educational travel partner for their many years of experience. As a world leader in international education, their 24/7 support team and safety teams all over the world, school protection plans, and for their wide range of neighboring schools that also use EF. So I do have some over here, including our, my colleagues, Mr. Nosie and Mr. Votto. Let me see, yeah, so these are some of the schools, so. So the language and culture experiences that the students get out of these travel opportunities are like no other. The students will encounter Spanish everywhere, giving them the chance to practice in real-life contexts, enhancing not just their communication skills, but their confidence too. The learning environment, the environment becomes much more engaging with all the hands-on and fun experiences. It helps them appreciate diversity, they become more open-minded and adaptable. They strengthen their social skills, friendship, and camaraderie. It is so nice to see each of the students' confidence and skills grow in just nine or 10 days, as they learn to adapt and thrive in new situations. So here is the highlights. We will explore several regions in Costa Rica, coast to coast, and we will have the opportunity to discover a few of Costa Rica's national parks and its exceptional biodiversity. We will also have fun participating in different eco-adventures, like sea blading in the raincloud forest, kayaking along Lake Aranal, enjoying in the hot, hot springs in the volcano area region, you can go back a little bit, so you can see a little bit of the highlights, in the volcano, and snorkeling in the beautiful beaches of Huancaste Region, et cetera. Other activities in the Huancaste Region include a boat tour, visit the Palo Alto, the Palo Alto National Park, et cetera. One of the highlights of our 2023 Costa Rica trip was the food. We can see a little bit here, so many things. Was the food, given Costa Rica's geolocation, they are able to prepare all the food with locally sourced ingredients. We had the opportunity to try many delicious dishes and flavor combinations. Yeah, we don't forget about the food. The kids are hungry all the time, all the time. They love that. So this is for February Vacation, so the dates are February 13th to the 21st. So in our itinerary is included, as you can see, I mean, all the, as, even as previous years, like round trip, hotels, meals, for, in some places, breakfast, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, in some other ones, they buy their own lunch. We have a tour director with us 24/7, transportation, local guides, guided sightseeing, entrances, entrances to landmarks and attractions, and the students are responsible for passports, of course, and visas if applicable, baggage fee, and this is if they want to document a bag, but they usually travel with a carry-on. Tips for local guides, both drivers and your tour director, snacks and some meals, and we do some fundraisers throughout the year to try to help them to cover like all these extra things, like the tips for local guides. So this is the information that kind of like we, we have been doing every year, I may have a little bit of information here, yes. And this is the cost of the trip, they can pay by weekly, monthly, or in food. And yeah, thank you for your time, I hope you consider approving this trip, and it provides great opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Excellent, nice job. Questions, comments?
Looks great. I'd like to go.
I would say I'm in.
Yeah, sure.
I just had two, two quick questions. First one, when you, when you showed the tour, how far apart are all those different cities? I assume it's a, is it a bus that you're taking?
Yes, yeah, we have a bus with us. Let me see.
And just like, and like, is it like, I have no idea, like distance, like hour bus tour, bus ride, four-hour bus ride, two hours?
So from Tortuguero, no, it's probably like, I don't know, between three hours or two hours, but, so we're spending, so San Jose to Tortuguero, I'm thinking that is about two hours.
Okay.
We stay there for two nights, and then we go to Sarapiquí for another night, Aranal Region two nights, and Huancaste two nights, and then we leave from that airport, so we don't have to go back to San.
Yeah, no, I saw, I, I was just wondering, I didn't know the space, like how far apart they were, so. And then, just to remind us, this is offered to what level? Obviously, Spanish students that are, is it juniors and seniors? Is it anybody in high school?
Yeah, we, it's, it's open for everybody, everybody that is interested. I believe that everybody, I mean, we have some freshmen that are like, oh my God, like they're amazing, and so we are, it's open for everyone, everybody that is interested in practicing and learning and the culture, there's so many things to offer over there, so, yeah.
Excellent.
I have the same question again, just about, is there opportunity for kids who can apply for a scholarship, and like where, where is that funding coming from?
Yeah, so, well, so for the first couple of weeks after we opened enrollment, the students have $200, $200 off, so that's kind of like something that the company is giving. And then we have, probably there's scholarships, I need to check, but it's the same company as Ms., yeah, they have, they have that, so we can, I can look at that.
Okay.
How many students would you expect for this trip?
So it's open for, if I'm not incorrect, for 36 students, just to kind of like, because of the buses, so 36, 38 students, yeah. Maximum.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Costa Rica trip for 2026.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Okay. Now why don't we get into a big discussion about social media and capital, no, I'm kidding. Come on up, elementary principals. I think we're gonna probably go into the stands for you guys.
Sure they got opinions.
Sorry if my voice sounds a little funny tonight, so I'm gonna try to get through this as best I can.
Is it all the crying because you are, this is your last time here, or?
Kind of stole my thunder, I was mad with that, I was gonna say, Molly out, drop the microphone, but thanks for having us as usual. We're here, myself and my colleagues, Dr. McKay and Mr. Maloney, are here to present the School Improvement Plan for the 2024-2025 school year. And we just have a few slides for each school. This year's school council at the Little School is made up of two parent representatives, Rebecca Anzoni and Katie Gabriello, two teachers. Rebecca Anzoni and Katie Gabriello, two teacher representatives, Kelly Pisardi and Kerry Fleck, myself, and the community representative, Amy Darling. I'd also like to say thank you to Beth Brown, who was one of our teacher representatives last year for the 2023-2024 School Council. Last year's School Council is the one that actually develops the plan for the coming year. So a few highlights from last year, sorry the print is so small. We continue to expand upon our professional learning communities. This past year, we had multiple book studies. The staff had a choice of which book they wanted to read, and we broke out into groups and worked on a book study, and at the end of the year came together to learn from each other and to hear about everything that we learned in the books and can apply to school, to our schools. And we are continuing in that format this year with another book study that will be happening in the spring. Our state accountability report indicated that we increased our accountability percentile from 96% to 98%, and I was extremely excited about the fact that we received all four points for attendance, considering the year before, we only received one out of four points for attendance. And we worked really hard on trying to work collaboratively with families to work with them to ensure that their children were coming to school. We strengthened our Tier One and Tier Two MTSS. And in the area of social-emotional learning, we, as we talked, as you know from your visit in May, we implemented the Six Pillars of Character, and that was a great program that we ran last year. We continue to expand MTSS for reading, writing, and we're using, in fourth grade, the wind blocks are also being used for a DUCI-offered, high-dosage tutoring in math. We've completed the full implementation of grades K to 1 in Witten Wisdom, this year Grade Two, and a pilot in Grade Three, getting very positive feedback from the faculty. It's a lot of work, very time-intensive, but they feel as though, in the long run, it's incredibly, we're getting incredibly positive feedback on the program. Last February, we introduced a heritage night on the same night that we had academic night. We piloted that by having a few of the faculty members do some heritage boards and bring in some artifacts from their heritage with the idea that we were previewing it for families, and hopefully, this coming February, we're hoping to have a heritage night on the same night as academic night, but this time, the families will be involved and will be, hopefully, designing presentations for parents and children visiting that evening. And we continue to work in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging with the coordinators. And we implemented equity walkthroughs last year, and those will continue this year. Last year's goals were written with regard to the MTSS tiers in ELA in math. Our goal was 90% of students would be in Tier One, 10% of students would be in Tier Two, and zero in Tier Three. I'll show you the results in a minute. And goal number three was student services, was to improve and optimize the outcomes for all students through MTSS interventions and a continuation of our work in the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. These were the results for the Little School. What you see in yellow is where we achieved, where we met our goals. And in the other categories, for instance, Tier One in Grade Four in ELA, we were, the goal was 90%, we were at 88. In Grade Five, the goal was 90%, we were at 73. And for whole school compiled of grades two to five, we were at 84%. And in math, anything in yellow again is where we achieved. In Tier One for Grade Four, we were very close, 86%, the goal was 90. And then, and for the whole school, 82%, the goal was 90. So we're getting there. You know, every year, it's a different cohort of kids, and the good news is it's on an upward trajectory, so it's where we want it to be. This is just a visual of where, what the goal was, 90% in Tier One. On the left, you'll see, and 10% in Tier Two, with zero in Tier Three. And the triangles on the right, the top one, is the reading triangle, which shows that Tier One was for the tested grades in reading, grades two to five. 84% in Tier One, 15% in Tier Two, and 1% in Tier Three. And for math, it was 82 in Tier One, 18% in Tier Two, and zero in Tier Three. And the new goals, this year, after collaborating with Mr. Maloney at the Batch Elder School, we're going to look at, I'm going to look at measuring student growth a little bit differently, although I won't be here to report it next year, but, so this year, we will be looking at achievement for all students based on their baseline iReady data. And the goal is for 85% of students will meet their typical annual growth in reading as evidenced by the end-of-the-year iReady data. Last year, the children achieved at 80%, so we bumped up the goal to 85. And in math, we have a goal of 70% of the students will meet their typical annual growth. Last year, they achieved at 66%. Similar, not exact, a little bit enhanced, goal number three and number four. Just a little continuing in that realm to improve in those areas. So, and I think that's it for me. Yep, we're up to the hound dogs.
Thank you. I must say, this is one of those sad moments, that it was sad when Mr. Colleen left our little group, and I've been with you for, I've been 12 years. I think we've been doing this together?
No. Fifteen.
You and I. Fifteen years, that's hard, so I miss that. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Glenn McKay, I'm the principal of the Hood School. This is our outcomes from last year and our upcoming plan for this year. These are my last year's school council members, so just a little thank you to Mrs. Alamonte, who is retiring from her two-year commitment on the school council. I have Mrs. Adams. Mrs., as the other parent representative, Mrs. Alamonte has been replaced by Stephanie DePerma, so that'll be our next year's parent representative. The two faculty representatives will remain the same. Mrs. Mayewski has interrupted, like, runs, so she started at a midpoint in a year, so her two-year cycle isn't up, so it's a discussion point for an upcoming faculty meeting. So you may see her towards the end, or you may see her replaced, it depends on how the faculty wants to handle that. And I'm still, Mrs. Heffernan will remain. Still continuing to look for that community representative, I have a good lead down by Starbucks, and I want to say it's, what? Mrs. Molly has volunteered, but you do not live in the Hood District, so I don't know if that would work. Although you do, I don't think that counts, but we can check. I would love to have you. Be honored. So some highlights for the Hood School for last year. State Accountability Report, we went up from the 93rd percentile to the 95th percentile, so we made a two-per percentile gain, very proud of that. That, those little two-per percentile point gains are harder than you can think, and they can be a double swing the other way too, so just, I celebrate accomplishments, super proud of my team for that and my students. Our big year was spent in family and community engagement at the Hood School. We did the playground, the turf field, it went way faster than anybody would have ever imagined, and that's not because of me, that's because of the team of parents and volunteers, and there were kids out there on weekends moving mouths. It was just one of those like amazing experiences that you have as a principal. So that was definitely the bigger highlight, that's why I included that picture. We continued forward with our school-wide community meetings. We had, there should be a K there, so S-R-R-K days. We had four of them, safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. We welcomed Murphy to our therapy dog team with Logan last year, so that's been a pleasure. We implemented equity walks, and we continued forward with our professional learning communities or our study groups. Science of Reading was a topic, student and community voice, Equity DEI walkthroughs, STEAM SEL days, and social-emotional processes. We really spent a lot of time working on that metamoment room, that break room that we have for students and staff, and desensitizing space, it's a super cool room for us to have. So our goals for last year, so teaching and learning is probably a little easier to explain if we go over to this slide. So we try to match this slide, we try to get 85% of our students in ELA and math into the green, or Tier One, 13% in Tier Two, and Tier Three, 2%. So that's our first two goals, ELA and math. Student Services, we talked a lot about implementing a disabilities awareness program through understanding our differences based out of Newton. Huge success, I'll talk a little bit about that. And then we also had our student council do a similar exercise that was a really good learning opportunity for them, and implement two days that would recognize a disability category or a marginalized population. So diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, we talked a lot, a real lot, about student voice, and we had a nice opportunity to do some student voice-focused groups, and I'll share some of those outcomes with you as well. As far as our goals, you can kind of see, I think the easiest way to look at this is to, ELA at the top, math at the bottom, fall is the measurement one, winter's the measurement two, and then spring on the far right is the end of year. So there's areas to celebrate, there's areas that, there's growth opportunities, we spent a lot of time analyzing it. I think like my big takeaway, if I look at this data globally, is that if you look at our at-risk categories from beginning, which would be here, and then look at them over here, that there's some pretty significant decreases along the way. So the Tier Ones closely get to our goals, they get to it in a couple of the areas, but not all. It's tough to talk about that Tier Two group, because that's a malleable group that we're trying to move kids from there into the green, and then take the kids from out of the red, but they move into the yellow, so it gets, it gets a little complex there. But my big celebration with the staff, after we spent a lot of time looking at this, was the number of kids that we moved out of at-risk and moved on up that chain. The interesting one for me was the fourth-grade ELA. If you look at the, we went from 4% at-risk at the beginning of the year, then we went down to zero, but then we bumped back up to 3%. I mean, the test is normed, so it gets harder as they go, so that was just an interesting one. That's the only one we didn't have below two, we had a bunch of zeros in there too. So pretty proud of the work that we did. We feel strongly and confident that keeping the baseline measurements at the same level is what we want to do as a school, and it's a good challenge for us. So just like a whole school, look at it, of measured grades, so we measure in grades one through five for math on iReady, and two through five on ELA. So it just talks, this graph is nice, because it talks a lot about like where we start, so beginning of the year, fall, here's what it looked like, towards the end of the year, here's what the graph looked like for all those students. So we went from 21% in Tier One to 70%, Tier Two from 63 to 29, and our Tier Three went from 17% to 2% for math. And then, if you look over your ELA, pretty similar story, 82% in Tier One from 49%, Tier Two from 41% to 17, and then the at-risk went from 10% to 1%. Some additional outcomes, so we, like I had said, we had implemented that disabilities awareness program through understanding our differences. Grades Three did deaf and hard-hearing, blindness, low vision. Grade Four, physical disabilities and learning differences. Grade Five did autism and intellectual disabilities. And our school council, our student council researched various other days with our, and they collaborated with our CPAP on the topics, and were able to push out Asthma Day and World Accessibility Day. It was a really, really good conversation to be participatory with, and that, I just thought they learned a lot. We spent a lot of time on student voice. We had one of our study groups do a deep dive into it, and just basically some takeaways, and this was kind of our theme as a school, we took away, when students are able to use their voice in the classroom, they are better prepared to make responsible decisions, advocate for themselves, and decide on their own course of action in the classroom throughout their K-12 education. And then just some other outcomes that go along with that. I had alluded a little bit to this, it was our student voice project, so school council really liked the topic of student voice, they thought that was a nice growth opportunity for us. So we did some student focus groups, we focused on Grade Three students, because we figured the Grade Five students were kind of at the end of their Hood career, and the Grade Four students were getting ready for fifth, so we might be losing them as we're building this. So we spent a lot of time with our third-grade friends. Those kids did a nice job of really articulating what they wanted to see in a school. They got not allowed to have the large leather massage chairs that they wanted in the cafeteria. I blamed the budget for that, but they, beyond the funny ones that we would all laugh at, because there were some really good ones in there, there were some real like concrete little things that bothered them, and it was just so interesting to see it. So I know that first bullet point seems like new door locks, but we have a bathroom outside of our cafeteria, and you never knew if anybody was in it or not, and the kids were really like frustrated by that. It was interesting that I've walked by that for X number of years and never noticed that, but it makes total sense, so we just changed the door lock, so it's green and red if somebody's in it or not, and we talked to them all about it. They wanted the rules posted on the table, and they really liked the idea of having them electronically put on a board, so we now have a board. We're still uploading them into it, but there's a TV mounted for them. The rules will scroll through that just so they see them, we mounted the rules on the tables. Thanks to Michael Conley, he helped me out with some funding for some new tables. So we went from the standard rectangle tables to ovals and rounds at the students' request, so it just, if you see it, it just, it's easier for them to chat, they're not yelling across to their friends, it's more collaborative, it's nice. The students complained about the other seats were, that some students were saving seats against the rules, and it wouldn't allow them to sit with friends, so that really solved that. Their research, they're trying to get me to research a way to get a quiet space, that's hard in that building, because there's really no place to put an extra table, so I'll keep trying to think about it. And the other thing is, if you've been to the Hood School recently, you've seen us trying to figure out how to track voice modulation. We tried what they call a Yakka tracker, it's a red, it's a stoplight that goes on the wall, it didn't work for the space, so the tech department's been working with me to get a microphone to the center of the room and have a visual display on a TV. So I'm still working on a little bit of that, but that student voice project was a really big hit for the kids and for the staff and the parents, and it was actually a pleasure to do. Goals for next year, we're going to remain the same for the teaching and learning goals in ELA and math. Really thought that we were closer this year, we're kind of in our groove with that, so we're going to continue with the 85, 13, and two, and trying to move all of our kids along that path. For student support services, we're going to look at multi-tiered systems of support, but we're going to really look at it through social-emotional lens. I think that we do a nice job of tiered instruction for ELA and math. I wonder how we talk about student experiences within that social-emotional well-being as Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. We have our school adjustment counselor that lives in that Tier One model, which is an absolute joy to have, that regular, I mean, that regular classroom instruction. She's also picked up a little bit of that Tier Two, so some of that pull-out smaller group along with our school psychologist, who's living in Tier Two and then takes over all of the Tier Three. So how do we understand that, how do we utilize that framework as a school? And how do students maneuver through those tiers in the building? Our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging goal is just around family engagement, so the school council really wanted, how do we collect community voices and plan for inclusive practices in our school? So we're going to take a deep dive into that, just getting like community voice, parent voice around decisions that we make. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Maloney.
Thank you for your time tonight to present the School Improvement Plan for the
the school improvement plan for the Batch Elder School. As you'll see, this is, to make up this year's school, council is in flux. I lost a community rep because she became a parent. Ms. Westminster, now she has a kindergarten student, so she could no longer continue as a community rep. I do have someone in mind. And Ms. Eichman has retired her two-year post. And I also have another line on that. So we will update. But Ms. Aranese is our parent rep. Ms. Fay, faculty rep. And Ms. Callen is our other faculty rep. So just some highlights from twenty-three, twenty-four. The state accountability report indicated that our school achieved an accountability percentile ranking of ninety-nine, which we're very proud of. And I think it all goes part and parcel with all the other work that we're doing and the goals that we've written for our school and therefore the goals that our teachers are writing in their ed eval process. So we're all pulling on the rope in the same direction. Just recently, we learned that we are a super stretch school based on our iReady scores. And I'll talk a little bit about that, what stretch growth looks like compared to the typical annual growth. But we were the highest stretch growth school of the five schools qualifying for this honor. And a gentleman from iReady brought us a banner down last week that we all signed today because it's the work that our teachers, my teachers have done to reach this goal. So we're going to post that as soon as everybody gets their signature on that banner. Also, we started this week, and you know, it's been a tradition, I think, that Mr. Colleen started many years ago, but the Thanksgiving food basket tradition for the food pantry. We supply fifty food boxes for local families. And you know, we work from now till the middle of November to collect food and collect money to provide those food boxes. And late November, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, we open up the school and the families come and they pick up those food boxes. It's a nice community building event for our students and our families and our teachers to participate in. Parental involvement, BPO, I can't say enough about what they provide for our school, whether it's just their time and resources and funding. We have a field trip at the end of this week. Third, fourth, and fifth grader going down to Gillette Stadium to participate in a STEM field trip. They actually will have to figure out how to ship all the equipment from Gillette Stadium for a road game in the pages. So that's the task that they'll be completing on Thursday and Friday. So we have our third, fourth, and fifth grade going down over two days. And we had our Boobash on last night. It was a trunk or treat. It's a new event this year, which was very well attended. And you know, we have our back-to-school family night. We have an end-of-the-year party. So it's a lot of great work that the BPO does to support the Batch Elder School. As mentioned before, last year, we had our wit and wisdom implementation in grade kindergarten and first. This year, it's rolled into second grade, looking to move forward into third grade the following year. And this kind of, this last bullet here was it's just an unintended consequence of some work that we were doing, looking at move-up day. Typically, in the past, we've, on the last day of school, had move-up day where students would learn who their teachers were going to be next year and they would go to the classroom. And it was a big thing. And we, at the start of last school year, formed a committee because we had some mixed reviews just about the day itself and some of the questions and some of the stress and some of the anxiety that the day actually caused. So we had a committee that ran the full school year made up of, you know, myself, teachers, parent professionals, just to look at what's best for our students and learning who their teachers would be next year in the classroom grouping that they would be with. So we, in through our conversations, came up with a goal of getting students to know all the adults in the building. Because it was an anecdotal story that a student learned who his teacher was going to be and was disappointed because it wasn't the teacher that he wanted. But when he went into the classroom, it actually was the teacher that he wanted. He just had the name wrong. So just to put a name with a face and a role in the building. So that's something that we worked on last year and we're starting that work again this year. We had teachers come down into the grade level below and read to them. All the fourth classroom teachers would come down to each classroom grouping and read them a story and tell them a little bit about themselves so that we're promoting that sense of community and just knowing everybody in the building. We actually did an activity today with staff where we grouped them in not their typical groups where they would sit within a faculty meeting. So we're modeling it ourselves as well. So in speaking with staff today, we rolled something out. I said that I was presenting tonight and said that I'm going to be proud and I'm going to celebrate the fact that we didn't reach our target goal in E L A and math this year. And I say I'm proud of that because of all the success that we did have, just not with the metric that we established. I think you might remember last year that I changed how we were going to measure our growth. And you know, you see Dr. McKay's presentation and Ms. Muller actually switched her goal this year as well, but the tier one, two, three. You know, in the past, it was, you know, we would have eighty-five percent of our students be in tier one, which was at or above grade level, and then a certain percentage in tier two and a certain percentage in year. And we had written that goal that way for a few years. And last year, talked about using that annual growth target as the metric that we were going to use. And what I liked about it, what we liked about it, was that it addressed each individual student where they, their entry point. So based on that beginning-of-the-year score, we would establish a target for them to grow one full year. So if we have a student that's, you know, coming in as a third grader, right early three, that's what their score would be. We would want to get them to, you know, early four at the end of the year. And if it was a third grader that was testing at a fifth grade level, how do we move them from a fifth grade level to a sixth grade level? So that was our target. And it was different for all of our students in all the work that we did with our goal statement number three, you know, tier two interventions in the classroom, the equity walkthroughs. Everything was focused on that year's worth of growth. So I'm proud to say that eighty percent of our students in grades two through five met their typical annual growth target based on the end-of-the-year iReady diagnostic. And that was in reading. I'm sorry, I didn't have that up there. But eighty-two percent of our students met their growth target in reading. And our goal was eighty-five percent. And seventy-five percent of our students, K through five, met their typical annual growth based on their math diagnostic. And our goal was eighty percent. But the consequences of that play out in the data that, you know, our MCAS scores have us in the ninety-nine percentile. We're a super stretch growth school based on that iReady data. So all that work based on these targets that have allowed us to have that success in using these other metrics. So to that end, my goals for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five are the same. The target is going to be eighty-five percent in reading and eighty percent in math. And just historically, just so you have a frame, we're eighty-two percent this past year, eighty-two percent in twenty-two, twenty-three, and seventy-five percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. And that is in reading. And in math, seventy-five percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, as well in twenty-two, twenty-three, and sixty-seven percent in twenty-one, twenty-two. And if you use the old metric, in math last year, ninety-four percent of our students were in tier one, five percent in tier two, and one percent in that tier three or that at-risk category. And in reading, we were ninety-two percent in tier one and eight percent tier two and zero percent at risk. So I believe that these goals are well-written. They're lofty goals. So you know, I'd rather reach for a more lofty goal than to, you know, bring that down. So that really has played out. And again, similar goal in two thousand, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five with M T S S. We looked at how I could better support, we could better support teachers in implementing that tier two instruction. We purchased and we're piloting this year, but it's based, it's an iReady Curriculum Associates product. It's that iReady Toolbox, which provides a lot of resources for our teachers. And it's, they're easier, it's easier for teachers, more efficient for them to meet students where they are. So in our Math Scramble, which is a math program that we homing in a group math students based on their ability, it can target specific lessons and standards based on that group, using the data from iReady to support what that instructional grouping would have. And again, we're going to continue our work with the equity walkthroughs. So this is just a graph. It's pretty simple. It's pretty basic, but it just shows that eighty-two percent in reading met their typical growth. Three percent scored for eighty to ninety-nine percent of their growth. And as you get down, it's, you know, the percentages are a little bit lower. And this is the math graphic, so seventy-five percent. So if we can just move a few percentage points from, you know, eighty to ninety-nine percent of their typical growth, you know, we could potentially hit that, hit those targets that we've established. And I think I already spoke to this slide, but just we've rewritten the goals for twenty-four, twenty-five. They're very similar to twenty-three, twenty-four. But I believe that the work that we're doing is really allowing our students to have that growth and the success that we've had over the last few years.
Thank you very much.
I said I only had three minutes, so I think I'm a little bit old.
Oh, good. Okay. Open up, if you guys want to go up there. Do questions here. We need questions here. Question?
I'll do questions before they leave my head because unlike Scott, I don't take notes.
I have a whole bunch of notes.
I should take notes. Oh, thank you very much. So Mr. Maloney, one of my questions on the last slide, and this is just more to refresh my memory, is when you're placing students in M T S S, you're using the iReady scores. And are you using MCAS? Are you using just teacher observations? Like is that, what are the, what are the systems that you use to place the kids into the different M T S S tiers?
So it's all of that. It's all the available data that we have. But we establish those math groups based on the iReady data. And it breaks it down into the domains or the standards where there may be some areas for growth. So when we group those students, similar abilities, similar areas for growth, so that we can target that instruction to that specific group. So yes, your answer is yes to all of those. And it's, you know, the teams get together along with Ms. Callen, who's the data leader at the Batch Elder School. And they have those conversations. And there can be some movement, you know, this student's better off in this group for this six or eight weeks. And then we can move him or her out into a different group just to best meet their, the needs that they would have.
Okay. My other question is kind of just general, just looking at some of like, especially some of the graphics, which are helpful for me in the way my brain thinks. Have, are you seeing, especially maybe with the, because through COVID, I had kids that were in the school system already. But you hear a lot about the kids that were not yet, they maybe were preschool students and they like, do you, do you see like, as you're looking at these numbers, do you notice like a dip on maybe the newer, the newer students that, you know, were maybe in preschool at that time? Or do you not really notice a dip?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think academically, no. I think we sent out at the badge, and I can't speak to the hood a little, but the early literacy screeners that we conduct, and we have to send out per the state, anybody who scores in the...
In the red.
In the red. So I think we only sent out sixteen letters this year, and that's K one and two. So I think academic, I think socially emotionally...
I think socially emotionally, we've seen some highs and lows.
I do think that some of those norm, like the norm reference, or some of them, they move, right? So they move along with the population. So that when you're comparing scores, you're comparing scores to like cohorts.
Yeah.
So there could be some of that within this discussion, too. But definitely, I think the social emotional piece is that we're, we see more of that.
Yeah. Some of the growth was amazing, like in Dr. McKay, your slides from the red into the yellow into the green. I'm not, I don't mean to jeopardize, but one highlight you need to add is Sally sells seashells. That was a highlight.
I didn't want to have to say that out loud because I would have been like Cindy Brady.
And then I...
Beating myself, obviously.
Oh, I can't say it either.
It was phenomenal.
Yeah. I'm teasing.
No, no, it was. I mean, I should have included that.
Oh, yeah, I'm teasing.
We made a video clip, too.
And Dr. McKay, the new dog, is that, is that, what's his name?
Murphy.
Murphy. Is he, is he...
I know you're a dog person.
Well, I'm just an all-animal person. I want ponies, I want goats in the school, I want everything.
There's a pig up for adoption. Did you see that?
There's a what for a dog?
A little piglet.
Oh, well, I mean, if my husband would let me. But my question about Murphy, is he owned by a faculty member?
Me.
Oh.
So I have a great little rescue dog at home named Bailey. When I got Bailey, I always wanted to have Bailey trained as a rescue dog, but, I mean, as a therapy dog. Yeah.
He didn't have it.
Not going to happen for that dog, sorry. She just wants to go out in the backyard and dig holes. It holes all day, that's fine. So I got a golden doodle, Murphy, and trained him like right off the bat, therapy dog. So he disappointed me on his first run through the test. Didn't do the stay. You have to sit him like twenty-five feet away and you have to stay and you have to walk away, no eye contact, and he's supposed to stay.
Yeah.
He was like, I turned around, he's like right next to me. I'm like, what are you doing? We didn't pass the test. We didn't pass the test, so after a second run on the test, he passed it, and, you know, we had taken the classes, so. He comes probably pretty good, like three to four days a week. It's hard when there's a meeting, because he's tethered to me.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of the rules. Kids love him, he just stands, he's like there in the morning, and they just come by, they pat him, they do his thing. I I did, I did a lot with Jeff Bryson over at the Howie Manning School helped me through like the process, so he's.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
That's great.
The dog's name is Howie at the Howie Manning School, which is interesting.
Everyone needs a dog.
Yeah, so he's fun.
That's great. And then my final thought was just the student voices was really cool.
Yeah.
That was really neat.
I can't take any credit for that, I was kind of like, this is a lot more work than I wanted right now, but we did it, and, you know, it was to hear their perspective. If you think you ask them a lot and you you hear, but to really like get that moment in time where they really show what they think, was really eye opening, it was super cool. So I I I'm looking for opportunities to do more of that. I still have to circle back with that group.
Is that your student council?
No, I did it with the third grade, like, just like we randomized and kind of picked a random group of kids, like out of like the whole cohort. I have to circle back with them and kind of like celebrate their achievements, but I want, like, this one, I want that sound meter done, so then I can say we're done with everything, and, yeah, so it's gonna be great.
Yeah, that's great, very interesting, thank you, sorry to jeopardize.
Before I move on, one of my many things about student voices as well, is there any thought on doing that again? Or is there any thought on the other schools doing something like that as well?
I think it's a great idea, I think anytime that we can include student voice into our decision making is is a positive, and maybe I'll steal Mr. McKay's hat for now and get some ideas. But I think it's, it's it's something that we talk about in our conversations with students, when we, you know, we have our spotlight values at the batch of the school, and you talk about being good citizens and leaders and using your voice, and, but I think the specifics, like, I think that lock, the lock is, I mean, something as small as that is, you know, if it helps students, helps kids, it's fantastic.
And I think having it randomized is interesting, because if it was self-selected, you're gonna have the same kind of leaders always self-selecting, and maybe those leaders aren't the kids that are maybe terrified to go to the bathroom, because they think someone's gonna walk in, which is actually a big quality of life, I mean, of all the things, it's just one example, but having the randomized selection, I think, is actually really interesting.
And and I I also think of student voices, a couple of things that people don't think about, is rather than just complaining, actually bringing up solutions and bringing the problem up, rather than just complaining about it to somebody. And I I've seen, Dr. Daley and I have, like, for some of the projects they do at the high school, sometimes their last couple of years, I've come in and talked to some students here, and sometimes just even saying, here's my issue, and us being able to say, well, here's the challenge with that, how can we find a solution to that? It gets people thinking about what it is, like, you know, how can I, like, okay, this is my issue, but how can I fix that? And so I think it's a great thing, I'd love to see other schools sort of steal that idea.
And I have a question, piggybacking up with the student voices, so the student voices was the third graders, but then you were mentioning the student council also? Is that the whole school, is that fifth graders?
So student council's been a group of six to eight students only in fifth grade.
Okay, and are they elected or nominated by the teachers?
So we've we've had different renditions of it. As of right now, each student brings, my understanding of the last one, I I did not watch the presentations, each student that wants to do student council comes in with a poster and explains their like leadership characteristics to their class, and then at the end, the class votes.
Okay, no, I think it's another way, like, to get students involved and, you know, feel more of ownership over your school and things like that.
We're actually happy to report that we started our first student council this year.
Oh, great.
First fifth grade, we have ten students in the fifth grade, and Mrs. Pepper, our school psychologist, is the student council mentor advisor. And so they had their first meeting, got little T-shirts, and already started to map out some of the things that were important to them. There's a long list that they're going to present to me, so it'll be interesting to see what they have to say.
Great.
It's a nice opportunity for them to gain leadership, right?
Yeah.
So we just did a fundraiser, we just recently did a fundraiser for the hurricane.
Yeah.
They 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 talk about it over the PA, they share like some facts about it, and then I want to say it was Thursday or Friday, they chose to do a green and gold day, and they stood and just took donations, like if you want to give a dollar.
Oh, nice, yeah.
They stand at the door, and then they, then they learn how to like, now we're gonna give it to this group, it's the same trustworthy group, it's like a good process.
Yeah, no, I was thinking of the student representative that was here, and then, you know, from from the different trips, and the students talking, and the fifth graders are like starting to get to that level where they're gonna have to take more ownership and responsibility and public speaking and things like that.
Now that's, now that, now that there's no bucklies to derail the the system in their little school, you can start that, so. Jen, any other comments on your thoughts or questions?
Uh, you can, you can go for your rest, I wasn't.
No, no, I'm just gonna.
Okay, okay, I just want to show a little bit more, just the meta moment, you said that was, that was cool, what is?
Yeah, so basically, SEL stuff is really escalate, not escalate into a significant degree, but definitely not. Student anxiety is high as opposed to very level. So sometimes, I'm a big break person, sometimes you just need a break, but what do you do when you're on that break? So you can, at the hood school, we can go into the meta moment room, the meta moment room has a vestibular swing, it has like silly putty, it has a table that you can do, a sand table, it's not sand, though, it's kind of like these round.
Those little.
The little gel balls.
Yeah.
And so you can do that, there's a whole bunch of sensory things, there's some lights, you can shut the lights off, you can put the smartboard on, and.
Is that the OT room?
No, that's the, no, right, this is literally the old computer lab at the front, it's room one, it's like room two, it's right next to the nurse's office.
Is it used often?
Yeah, yeah, so it's usually like with a teacher, or, you know, one of us, like, I'll go out, or the school psychologist will go out, if it's like a, an emergency, kind of like a really hype, like hyper escalated student, the nurse can kind of like jump in. It's just kind of like one of those places you can go in, you'd be surprised how calming a vestibular swing is for a student, just to go on a swing that's mounted and kind of like swing down.
Yeah.
Just like have, be removed from whatever that that anxiety provoking thing is, just to get like a place to have a break.
Okay.
Yeah, with something to do. Like, so one, it's not out there this year, but there was a gigantic, like, coloring board on the wall, and like students were going, filling little sections of it, like.
Just like, yeah, no, no, that's great. And then this might be a a bigger question, I'm not sure, but depending on the the ballot question with with MCAS, depending on which way that goes, does that affect anything in the elementary schools in terms of your goals or anything like that? I know it's just to get rid of it for our graduation requirement, but.
No, and, no, not at all, and then I would say, like, it goes back to that other question, so we're like, I think I can speak for all of us, we're super proud of our MCAS scores, I mean.
Yeah.
We we do well, but we don't use those as our internal measures either for school improvement plan goals, but we could. They're just like that one moment in time for us, and.
Okay.
Once a year kind of thing, whereas like iReady can get like three measures along the way, so those are more true to us.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tim, thoughts, questions?
I was curious on, you said you mentioned from a score of one to four, was that on attendance? I was wondering, could you describe some of the specifics you, I mean, that's a jump. What were some of the things that you did to to improve so so dramatically?
Yeah, I I monitored attendance pretty closely throughout the year, and so at every trimester, at at, when we were preparing for report cards, we looked at the attendance and we contacted parents. So eighteen days out of school during the year is considered chronically absent. So I divided that by three trimesters, so if a student was out six days or more, by the time the first trimester came, and I called the parents, we sent letters, we had meetings, we asked parents to come in. Very productive and very informative, because sometimes you just don't know what's going on at home. For instance, I have a child that on half days, he's absent every day on a half day, because he, his parents have no way, they can't afford the after school program, they work, they have no transportation for him in the middle of the day. So that was informative to me, so we've been working with them to figure out how how best to help them get their child to school. We did it all year long, I looked at attendance versus iReady scores, MCAS scores, we kind of correlated, you know, to look at kids that were chronically absent or that had had high attendance rates, did that affect their achievement in school? But it was really all about communication with families and keeping those lines of communication open, and working together to try to figure out, how can we solve the issues that you're having? If your child is giving you difficulty in the morning coming to school, what can we do to support you? I'm, I've literally climbed in the backseat of a car and sat there and talked to a child for ten minutes, until they calm down, and then they'll come into school. So you do what you have to do, but it's really important to communicate that, you know, we we keep telling them about the eighteen days, and it's important, and it's not just about the eighteen days, it's about having your child in school so that they can be there for instruction, because every day of missed instruction puts the child behind. They have try, always playing catch up, they always have work to make up, and it's, so we were very proud of the fact, and Patrick knows, that I I worked really, really, my school psychologist and I worked really diligently on it, and we were so surprised and so excited when we saw that we got four out of four points this year, because we were, we were devastated when we got one out of four points last year.
No, congratulations, that's a huge accomplishment in one year to make that jump.
We were very excited about that.
And I guess the the only other more of a comment or maybe feedback, because I think now we've seen all five improvement plans, and the one thing that's, I think, either come out either in the in the presentation, or that has been expressed by all all of the principals so far, has really been this notion of anxiousness, and hearing the student voices, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could incorporate student voices to see if we can understand if there's a root cause to some of the anxiety that we're seeing at really all five schools. I think, I didn't notice a pattern until all three of you either outwardly mentioned it, or it was in in the actual pitch that you gave, and is there, the student voices thing, I think, is fantastic, we're not gonna go, you know, belabor that one, because that's a great way to get that feedback. But are there simple things that we can do, or that Dr. Daley can do, or the school committee can do, to help, you know, be as simple as the door lock on the bathroom, which I never would have thought of in a million years, to help bring that down? Because I think that we're five for five on anxiety in the schools from the, from all five presentations.
And I think recently, we just got the the results from the vocal survey, which is the survey at the at the end of MCAS that you know, highlights that school climate and environments, we're just starting to unpack some of that data, and this will be the second year that we have that data, so we're gonna maybe look at some trends there. I also wanted to mention too, that we started piloted it a little bit last year, but we have what's, it's a meaningful work program. So Tabitha Haidon, who's one of my school psychologists, she pairs students with a job in this meeting. Last year, she had a couple of students work with Mrs. Weiss in PE, so we looked at their schedule when it wouldn't really impact, you know, them missing some class time, and went down to PE and helped with the kindergartners. And this year, we have a student that's working in the art room, so we're looking for opportunities for students to work with younger students to to help, and, you know, it's, it works both ways with that program, so. But I think opportunities like that, where we can have students participate and take ownership, and really, you know, I think it's it's a benefit.
I just have to say that the the addition of the school adjustment counselors, I appreciate that so much, and I want to say that publicly, the work they do is just fantastic, and they are, just their demeanor and calmness and ability to see children and and to guide them through some of the issues that they're having, it it has really been a wonderful thing to watch, and I'm so appreciative that we were able to at least get the school adjustment counselors part time. I mean, it's, it's not a perfect scenario, because very often, we we need them on the days that they're not in the building. But really, just the work they do is just fantastic, so, again, thank you for, you know, supporting that, it was, it's really, really important.
Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, I mean, the, I don't, talking about problems without solutions, I wanted to talk about the differences in the goals between the schools as between standardizing on sort of the absolutes of number of students per tier versus percentage of growth. Pardon?
Tiers versus annual growth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First off, I like the fact that you're doing it differently, it's not a matter of standardizing, because it's interesting to see what will work better as between the schools, because eventually, I mean, yes, it would be nice if everybody was using the same thing, but it would be great if that decision was made after a few years of studying both, and then saying, all right, which works best? And I'm sort of curious, I mean, you've only done it for a couple of years, although you could look backward, but that's a bit of work too. But I think, I I was thinking, as the presentations were going on, I lean more towards percentage of growth, because it accounts for students that might already be in tier three, to say, okay, well, let's, they they should see improvement as well, and it sort of accounts for that. But I could see merits on either way of doing it. Like I said, I don't know that I have anywhere to go on that in terms of recommendation, because I I think it will take a little more time to see what works best.
Absolutely, and in that, the change for me was born out of conversations that I was having with teachers, you know, Ms. Callen, who really, she loves data. And I initially, I'm like, what if we looked at the stretch growth? And through a conversation, she said, the the better metric is that years' growth, because that's what we would expect after a year's worth of instruction, regardless of where the starting point is.
Right, exactly.
You know, you wanna, you wanna grow a year, and that's, at the time, it worked best for me and for what.
Right.
And, you know, and I, there's merits to tier one, tier two, tier three as well, so, but yeah, I think.
Like I said, I lean towards that as well, but but I do see the merits of both sides of the system. And then, like I said, maybe after a little more data's out there to compare methodologies, it'd be great to see, okay, which do we think is working best, or which way to go, and then standardize on it, but.
Sorry, can I just jump in on that one point too? I mean, I'd I'd be interested to see both, you know, and and then you can set your goals on where they need, but I think if you already have more than ninety percent in the upper, the highest tier, then I think annual growth makes more sense if you don't have it. So I think it could be based on where your numbers are, what the goal is, but it's just interesting to see both.
Absolutely, and what's great about the iReady platform is that you can, you can see the stretch growth, the the on grade level, or the or the typical annual growth, so, you know, just different data.
Yeah, I just think it would be nice to see both of them, regardless of what the goal is, so.
I guess the question I have along the same lines is, do we know what other districts are doing for their for their goals? Do we have a sense? You may not, that's fine.
When we first started this journey, it was a lot of MCAS oriented goals, and and it was, made sense at the time for us. It it was like I had said, that one data snapshot in a moment in time, and I like that, but I like this a little better, because it's easier to tell a story. So I don't know, I haven't like checked in a lot, but I know it was heavy MCAS prior.
Yeah.
And and I think personally, my own personal, so last year, one of my my teachers, we were, you know, reviewing the school improvement plan, and we pulled up her children, their their school improvement plan, and we're looking at it, and it was, there wasn't really anything that concrete, and which made me then go look at a couple others. And what I like about the goals that we've written, they're pretty to the point, they're 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 simple, and they're to the point, and they're, you can measure them, and and you will know at the end of the year whether or not you've met them or not, it's, there's nothing really subjective about, at least the academic goal. So that's what I like about them, and that's what I see some difference in in surrounding districts.
The only other thing that was going through my head, and this is not something I'd expect anybody to be doing, it would be interesting, is almost like a a baseball OPS type of thing, is anybody combining some of these things to to normalize all the scores, like MCAS plus iReady, or I I don't know how I would do it, but it was one of those things that was just going through my head.
We played with it, I didn't know what you were, I didn't know what the baseball reference was, we're playing with it, it's, it's, you can do it, it's hard.
Yeah, no, I I would bet.
But there's also, it's a crosswalk, and I think maybe Mr. Colleen, there's, it's a performance indicator?
Yeah.
So based on, you know, at the beginning of the year, mid-year, it'll predict what your, what the student's success will be on on MCAS. And and we actually used it last year, because one of our grade levels, their mid-year scores were a little bit, so we had, low, and we had that conversation, what are we gonna do differently so that we can get your, because that mid-year score didn't look great.
Right.
To predict what, so there are some ways, and they just rolled, I already rolled that out last year, so we we worked.
Yeah, it's just, I I am a bit of a data geek too, so these, it was just popping through my head.
Yes, no, it's.
Jeff's the one that's ruining sports with analytics. On the iReady, just just real quick, just to be super clear, so the iReady, it's it's valuable where they are, it's like if a student starts fourth grade, it's basically saying, do you know the fourth grade material on the first day, versus do you know the fourth grade material on the last day? It's the same sort of level first, and and you're saying, so you would expect a lot of people not to know the fourth grade stuff at the beginning of fourth grade, and you would expect most of them to know it by the end of fourth grade, i- is that correct, or does or does the level change where you expect them?
It's an adaptive test, it it, if you're doing well, it's gonna push you further.
Like Basil's and Selena.
Correct. But 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 the point is, like, you're you're testing in the beginning of the year for stuff, like, are they at this level, and you you just got to that class versus the end, but it's it's not like, are you the beginning fourth grader versus are you the ending fourth grader? It's not against that, it's against one set standard fourth grade, and you, are you there at the beginning, are you there at the end, correct?
I would double check that before I'd answer, because it sounds to me like you're saying, like, grade four month one, grade four month two, grade four month three. I would wonder that out loud, my initial back.
No, my my thought would be, you you, whatever it is, it's the same at the beginning or the end, and you're you're saying, do I, can I hit this standard now versus later on, it doesn't, the standard isn't going up throughout the year, correct? It's not like, it's the same standard that you either hit it in the beginning or you didn't, and then you hit it.
Same, the way the questions are worded, I would ask Mr. Colleen, would you, do you have thoughts on that piece of it?
The baseline is the beginning of the year test.
Yeah.
And so you can set, so you can demonstrate proficiency in the fourth grade standard, but they may put a question back in later.
Yeah.
But they're measuring the growth from your performance in the beginning of the year test.
Correct.
Which is, which you said, the right, is they're measuring the end of the year fourth grade standard, that's why at the beginning of the year, if they ever show it that, you see many more people in the yellow.
Right.
At the beginning of the year, which when we first started, the educators always responded to, like, are you really concerned? And then you see what the end of the year looks like.
Because you see every grade, it's like, oh, they did great at the end of third, and then, oh, they were lower in the beginning of fourth grade, like, what happened? And it's because the standard went up, and so you're not there yet, and. Okay, so you would expect to see some of that under normal conditions. Other questions, just a very specific question on the bats, Mr. Maloney, there was, on the ELA, I think it was, for some reason, like, the annual growth was under twenty percent, like nine percent were under, right there, nine percent were under twenty percent, that just numbers stood out? Do you think that could be because so many people were already in the highest tier? That there wasn't as much growth, that was just the one number of all the numbers that kind of stood out?
I would have to go in and.
I don't know what it was.
See who those students are, and look at their profiles, and I would have to do a little.
Yeah, it was just kind of odd, because it was like eighty-two, and then it was all twos and threes, and that was the one that just, I'm curious.
It could have been where they, they were, started the year so high.
Yeah.
Didn't get them.
Well, that's what I was saying, that's what I, that that would actually be my suspicion, is that there was a lot of people that are very high that, yeah.
And and I just, you know, we actually, there's a fifth grade group that was a little cohort of students that finished last year very well, and started this year very well, and we're kind of piloting a, it's not gifted and talented, but it's just a homogeneity grouped, and we're pushing them a little bit on the top end, so it allows us to to do stuff like that.
Yeah.
Can I just, like, go to one of the triangles? Can I just like go to one of the triangles? I think like the question that we spent, the three of us spent a lot of time talking about is, so when I talked, I talked about how much time we spend moving from red to yellow and yellow to green, right? I think we spent a lot of time, the three of us, on like, what, what do you do to do that? So how do you not just teach to the red or teach to the yellow or teach, how do you look at them as like cohorts of students or student groupings? Like in a flexible way, meaning like you're not, one, you're not stuck in it for the year. Like what instructional strategies do you use in each tier? So how do you take somebody who's already in green tier one and keep pushing them? And what threshold bands within those with scores? And how do you move kids' scores up as smaller groups of students?
Very basic question, school council. We hear about it here, like that they help with the school improvement plans, but can you just speak very quickly like to what, what the role of the school council is? That's a very basic question, but I, I, when my kids were very young, I got into school community, I never did the school council and so I'm not, not even sure what it is. And just, just in case people are watching to, that might be interesting.
I find my school council to be a very good sounding board. We have some really good conversations about school life in general.
Yep.
And it's a small group, obviously, but we're able to have some pretty good conversations about a day in the life. And then when we start looking at goals and getting their input as to what they would like to see, you know, you talk about student voices, it's parent voices, community voice, so they're really good sounding board. And I know there's a legal definition of what a school council is and what our purpose is, what their purpose is, but it's just a really good support for me in making decisions and looking, like we had extensive conversations about move-up day. And they, they were different than kind of what the thoughts were and the ideas that we had internally. And it was good to hear that perspective about something that we were working on to get their feedback on that. And we'd made some tweaks based on what the school council had to offer.
Is it once a month, like I saw there are some openings, so if anyone on the Google Meet or anyone wanted to join, is it once a month or once, what is the commitment?
Once a month.
Once a month.
It's a month. It's a public meeting, gets posted at town hall so anybody, anybody can join.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, can I technically answer it? So identifying the educational needs of our students, reviewing the school's annual budget, adopting the annual goals for the school and formulating the school improvement plan, the technical roles.
Yep.
But I think what you said, that, I loved that word perspective, right? They, they offer a different perspective, like did you look at it this way? Or sometimes what I challenge mine to do is if there's a problem out there, why don't, like, if there's a PA problem, they should be flowing it through the school council, so bring it to the parent reps so it gets to me that way. Because that's more of like the appropriate place for those kind of like discussions.
It's just good to get parents' perspective, things like traffic issues in front of the school.
We've never had.
You know, I'm out there every morning when letting kids out of cars and everything, but I'm not really paying attention to parking situations down the street or in the parking lot. So to get that kind of a feedback and to be able to work all together, something simple as that is valuable.
Yeah, I mean, the move-up day, it's funny, that ended up being at the school committee, we talked about that because people thought that because we were cutting positions, they changed the move-up day and it was, it was a budgetary issue. That came, that ended up coming up as an issue here.
And talking about unintended consequences, it helped us with that because we didn't know, you know, that we were going to have to.
Right, what position and, yeah.
I never knew what first graders going to look like, so it kind of was, there was a direct relation to it.
Did have some.
Yeah, okay. First of all, great, great presentation by all three of you guys. It was very, and again, we, we enjoy the conversation back and forth, so appreciate that. My last two questions go outside of the presentations here, but since you're all here. The first one, with Mrs. Molly leaving, Mr. Maloney, you're the only principal that has been hired since I've been here.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious, what was your experience coming into the role? What are some things that we need to all be thinking about, you know, when, again, not really for us, but I'm just curious because you're literally, we have a very experienced group of principals right now and we have two leaving. And so I'm just curious from you and you came from a role, an assistant principal role already, but just curious about your experience about that transition, any guidance for us?
Well, I definitely think the support of both Glenn and Chris to learn the role was invaluable. I, you know, I can't tell you how many times I picked up the phone and made a phone call and asked. And also, you know, Mr. Colleen and Dr. Daly, their support. So, you know, in thinking about it, you know, I think we have an excellent team to support.
Do you three have regular meetings already set up or do you just do it ad hoc when you need?
Yeah, so we call that the top secret.
We don't tell anybody.
It's hard for us to get time, to be honest.
Right.
Because of the nature of what that is and we do carve out our top secret elementary principals meetings and we do a Google hangout. We have them pretty regularly, but I would be honest, like do we just hop on them sometimes too quick when we have a presenting issue? I mean, I think we spend a lot of time like being very thoughtful. We're all a little different, but we're all really the same. And I think that there's sometimes those little differences, our conversations that we have and that, differences are okay, but like at the root of it, we're very similar. We just have those discussions around how do we stay that way? So we do things at the same time. Like an apparent experience would be like, the handbook is a perfect example. If we send that out, we send it out the same time. We try to like message at the same time, MCAS scores same time. Just so that lived experience in the community is the same, not, so it's not divisive that one school has something and one school doesn't. So those bigger items, do we miss one once in a while? Maybe, but I think, I think we're pretty good. So those, that's kind of, you know.
But I would say, you know, just having that support and it's, it's really what, and it's not that the batch is better than the little and the hood is better than the batch. And it's, it's truly a collaborative supportive and I think whoever does, obviously, Miss Molly has very big shoes to fill, literally and figuratively.
Really not small.
But I, I think that the team would be there just to, you know, really support.
And then my final question is about capital. We're going to be having a discussion in a few minutes about the modulators at the hood school and the little school. And I'm just curious from an educational standpoint because what we're going to be discussing is they need to be replaced. You know, they need to be replaced, should they be replaced or should there be one permanent construction at the hood school? Which would mean some things not being at the little school. And I'm just curious from the principal perspective, would there, what would that impact be if some of the things that are at the little school are now at the hood school? I'm just curious from your, your position.
One of us has a very strong belief on a certain group being together, so I would let Mrs. Molly answer this question.
Yeah.
I've always.
You can say it.
I, I asked the question, I asked the question.
This is her.
I've been asking for an early childhood school for the last, oh my, Kathy Willis was here when I first brought it up.
Yep.
So, you know, in a perfect world, it would, I think that that would be very beneficial for children of that age group. I think having a school focused just on early childhood would be fantastic. I don't know if that, if this plan addresses any of that, but for you to know right now that at the little school, because our enrollment is down and we only have two kindergartens, two pre-k's, the modular unit is not being used this year. Because we had quite a few issues with it last year between the flooding and the windows leaking and the termites and everything else that were going on. So, you know, if our enrollment grows, obviously, they would have to, you know, if we had to, if we had additional need for classroom space, not having a modular would impact that, but I mean, we've always made things work in the past and.
But that's the, that's where the conversation went immediately when we had those initial conversations about a permanent building or modulators or whatever. What's best for, you know, Chris said, we always make it work, but what's, where are we going to get the most bang for our buck? And if it's, you know, a permanent structure at the hood school that allows for, you know, six, seven or eight learning spaces, that's better for, for all of us. And that's, you know, where we went with that conversation immediately. So capital is huge.
Yeah.
And there's not a lot out there, but, you know, we need to do what's, what's, what's best for, for the entire district. And, you know, it's not just one elementary school, it's the three of us that are laying that foundation. You know, I think you asked the score about, Jen, you asked about MCAS scores. I use the analogy all the time of, of building a, a house, building a home. You know, and typically I talk about K to five where, you know, at the end of fifth grade, the house is built, but it's really K to twelve. And it's the foundation that our staff, our schools provide so that we can, you know, put that last coat of paint and that polish on. And you have, you know, Rafi Toby speak here tonight so eloquently. I think we all own that Rafi a little bit, right? I had him at the middle school for a while, so that's what, you know, we're looking for and.
Okay. Yeah, no, again, we're just going to be having a discussion about capital in a few minutes, so I figured I'd get your thoughts on it as well. I have nothing else. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts? So if nothing else, can I have a motion to accept the elementary school improvement plans?
Move to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five elementary school, school improvement plans.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all those in favor, I oppose, unanimous. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Feel better?
I'll see you in May.
We will see you in May still, so we're not going to do all the goodbyes. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to take, we won't turn off the Google Meet, but let's just take a three-minute break if anybody needs for a minute. Could I do?
I was going to say, you want to self-serve.
Want to do the two things quick so they can go?
Oh, what do they, what did I hear for?
The hood school field naming and the batch.
Okay, yeah, we can do those and then we can take the quick break, sorry. Never mind, no three-minute break. Okay, no three-minute break, we're going to do the naming rights. I forgot, we have those ones too. Okay, Dr. Daly, you want to lead us in the naming of the hood school and the bachelor's school cafeteria?
Sure. So this summer when we discussed the different proposals, the committee decided to allow for school committee approval for smaller items such as a, a structure or a section within a school as opposed to having to go through the full search committee process, I'm sorry, the full town meeting, field naming process. So the first letter that was shared with you is the hood school.
The field.
The hood school field, which Dr. McKay has shared a lot of materials here for, which you've read this previously and discussed previously. So I don't know if there's any discussion questions.
And this would be for the person individually, not for the business, correct?
It's technically family field, but it's cafeteria, but like.
Correct, correct, but it's not the business name, it's the person individually.
Even on the entrance sign, it, it says like children's names.
Okay. Yes, I don't have any questions or thoughts, anybody? Okay. No, we appreciate the generosity and all the work that was done.
Level of dedication was just, I'm, I can't.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm in agreement. Do you want to, I'm going to make a motion to accept, or you're going to do a motion to accept the naming of the hood school playground?
Sure.
You're making them all, so, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
The field at the playground.
Yeah, move to approve the hood playground for naming after a cavalry field.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, all those in favor, I oppose, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay. More issues with the bat, I'm just kidding. The bachelor's school cafeteria?
This is long overdue. This actually was something that happened when Mr. Colleen first transitioned and became assistant superintendent. There were a lot of different dedication ceremonies at the bachelor's school in his honor. Unfortunately, we didn't really have a process in place and we were trying to figure out what we needed to do. Now that we've taken action here, I thought it was appropriate to do this. Also, the sign ended up in Mr. Colleen's office here and I said, that's not, we need to get this in its, in its correct place. So there is the, that's how long ago this was, as you can see the mask. But I think we should absolutely officially name the cafeteria after Mr. Colleen. I did gather a lot of, there's a lot of, I didn't, I didn't share all of this with you, but they shared some of the things from that day, including there's a song in Mr. Colleen's honor, there were some videos, there was a lot of, a lot of different things. So I just compiled that, took the information and wrote the letter here. So I, I would, I would hope that we can do this local dedication of the Colleen's Cafe.
My only question would be, not the library for the, for the assistant superintendent of district of learning? Not the gymnasium for the high school girls' courts, but the cafeteria? Well, I'm, I'm in agreement. Any comments, questions? Want to make a motion?
Sure, move to, move to approve the bachelor's cafeteria to Colleen's Cafe.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor, I oppose, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys. And we might as well just do the last one too, the field naming committee. Do I do the last one now too, Dr. Daly, just the discussion on the field naming committee? Do you want to, so I assume you've gotten some feed, you have some people that are interested in the principal search? Have you gotten a lot of people reaching out about that or not?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we had talked over the summer about trying to form a committee because there's some fields, at least one field in particular, that wants to be named. And so through our policies, we have to form a committee to do that as well. And so just curious if we want to post that in the same way that we did the principal to form a committee looking at that as well. I'd be in favor of, let's just do it now and we have at least one, if not two, but there were one or two, there were two proposals, weren't there, for two different areas? So we could create a committee and we could maybe do, we can decide, the committee, I guess, can decide if they want to do multiple at once or do one and then the other. But I think the first step is we need to send out and actually post for it in the same way we did for the principal searches. So I think we should do that and anybody disagree, anybody have any thoughts? Okay. Would you mind?
I'm happy to do that.
Post that and do that.
Is there a certain point person to be on that committee from the school committee?
Who wants to, I mean, I think all four of you want to be on the principal ones. I mean, I don't know. I'm happy to do the field one if, if nobody else wants to, but at the same time, if other people wants to, they can.
Wouldn't we, I mean.
Reach out in the same way?
No, no, I was just thinking whoever's on the subcommittee for, for sports.
Tim and I.
Athletic subcommittee, I'm fine with if you want athletics, somebody from athletics subcommittee?
Yeah.
Sure.
Is it going to be one person?
I'm not trying to force you guys into it, but.
No, no, that's fine, yeah, makes sense.
I forget whether it says, I can look that up.
That's fine, so one or two of you, how about that? I'm, I'm fine with athletics subcommittee being the people on there. Okay, good. We don't need to vote on that, so we'll do that and now let's just take a three-minute break. And we'll come back and talk about capital and social media. Back in three minutes, we're not turning anything off if you're out there.
Good reminder.
I did, I did notice the library, not teaching or learning room, cafeteria.
Do you have any problems with the smoke today in the schools?
Not in the schools. It's pretty bad though.
Yeah, you can smell it outside.
Yeah.
I think Lynn Field got dismissed.
There was nothing that came up, but we, I forwarded what the town put out because anybody was around. Yeah, it was concerning. It's happening everywhere.
We got a little whiff just before school committee and that was it.
Yeah.
Five thirty. I guess down towards. It'll be as long as, yeah, all better. Windows blowing today, so.
Yeah, I went to, they were indoors sports, I could.
Yeah, I went to, uh, Navarre's Indoor Sports, I could smell it there.
I'm, I'm freezing, is it freezing?
It's freezing, I'm always cold.
I'm always cold.
I need to start bringing blankets.
I was just gonna say, I feel like I always have blankets in my car from the hockey rink, I'm gonna start freezing.
I love it.
Everyone seems happy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm freezing.
Static.
What are the appointments and refreshment and stuff?
Well, capital.
But I'll do the appointments for the senior collaborative and everything first.
With social media?
And that, no.
Oh, the two appointments.
Then we can do capital and social media, just 'cause I don't forget in between and just clear on the deck a little bit quickly.
We're doing okay with time?
Yeah. Better than I thought, honestly.
Yes. I'll see you in the morning.
Actually, if Dr. Daly stepped out, why don't we just do capital, we'll start capital now, 'cause. Sure, you can start that, do you wanna lead us in the capital improvement plan presentation?
Yep. So as we've explained in the past, I thought I would just, before I get into the next year's requests and future requests, I just quickly update where some of the projects stand with FY twenty-five appropriated capital, um, as well as some, there were some remaining FY twenty-four projects that carried over. So, um, the hood school boilers replacement, we had three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars appropriated for, um, got completed this summer. Project went well, they were, they were the three condensing boilers, pretty, um, high-tech technology. Um, but everything looks good there, we're already seeing efficiency in the savings.
For anybody who hasn't seen it, by the way?
It's great.
Awesome. It's unbelievable.
That was impressive, yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, unbelievable, they did a really nice job.
Yeah.
Impressive.
Special education van came in, that's being put to good use, that came in in May of twenty twenty-four. So this one was an FY twenty-four project that was a combination of grant, combination of some additional appropriated funds. Um, that was the long wait, it just took a while for, to get delivered, but we have it and it's being put to good use. The windows project got completed like last week.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Mari, not here anymore, but she was very happy with how it went, we focused on the little school. Um, the next allotment would be the hood school, but the little school was in the most need and it went, it went really well, so I'm pleased with how the company, um, that was chosen, um, worked out, it is, everyone's very happy. Um, the middle school, high school interactive board replacement at the torrent thousand dollars walked around with Dr. Downs about a week and a half ago, we took some photos. Here's one in a classroom, the teacher is there using the board, using the, the wireless keyboard as she teaches the class and instructing you with the board. Um, but everything went smoothly, it was completed in August. And again, that focused almost entirely on the high school, um, this year, but everything, everything looked good there. Um, the utility rack truck, this is the one item that we're waiting for delivery. So again, these vehicles are just on long backward times, it was ordered right after town meeting. Um, we are hoping we see this in November, um, so we're waiting on that. So hopefully that comes in before the snow arrives.
I was gonna say, is this used for plowing and are we okay if we don't have it?
We'll be okay, this is the vehicle it's replacing, um, but we'll be okay, we'll make do, but it would be really helpful if that came in. It's supposed to come in in November.
You hold on to this vehicle or do you sell this?
So this vehicle we're gonna hold on to, and this is gonna become sort of the third vehicle for our third grounds guy, the one that is going to be traded in is the two thousand nine vehicle that's being used for that right now. So this vehicle is deemed to be in better shape than that vehicle. This vehicle will be used sparingly just for kinda on-campus groundwork and plowing. The elementary, uh, security system upgrades, which essentially just focused on some wiring and some alarm panels, um, got completed this summer, um, everything went pretty smooth with that. Just sort of a small allotment of sixty thousand, which I think sets us up to do something larger projects in the future if we needed software and other upgrades, but we did get every elementary system kinda updated with their, the infrastructure, the panels. We moved some panels around in some buildings to put them in a more convenient location for folks coming into the building, custodians that had to, so every, that project went, went well. Um, and the modular feasibility study was completed in October, um, and that was uploaded to, uh, this doc, your documents for this evening, um, I think the company did a really good job taking our feedback and, and coming up with options and pricing it out for us and, um, assessing the, the condition of those modulars, so, for a pretty good, pretty good reasonable price too, and we got a lot done for that. So I, I, we were, we were pleased with the company.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions about the study afterwards, but I think we'll get to that in our later section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Hood school roof restoration phase one is currently happening as we speak. So it happened a little bit later than we wanted, but we knew we were on a very tight timeline, putting that out to bid in June, late June by the time I went out to bid, and bids came in in mid-July. So asking a lot to try to get that done in August, so the company is, is there doing it now. Should be completed by the end of next week, um, but everything that I've heard is that it's going smoothly and it's been little disruption, which is what, um, you know, we, we're, we're working on with them. So they've been pretty reasonable to date.
Are they doing it during school hours?
They are doing it during school hours, it just, by the time we started, it was just with darkness, it just wasn't.
Well, that's true.
It wasn't reasonable to start at three o'clock.
Right.
So, okay. So again, looking at vehicles, technology, facilities, um, projects that are over twenty-five thousand dollars, useful life of more than five years is the criteria that the capital improvement committee sets for large cap. So that's what we're working towards, here is the recommended summary three-year chart. So obviously, some big-ticket items and facilities, the largest being the hood little mod, mods, which we'll, we'll spend some time on in a moment, and then completing the, the, the restoration of the hood school roof. So those are the two big-ticket items over the next couple of years. And then we sort of return to just the other, um, projects that we're working on, in terms of vehicle replacement schedules, technology needs and maintaining facilities. But two, those are the two big-ticket items. So starting with technology, um, we, the top request for fiscal twenty-six, and again, not much changed in the capital plan this year, obviously the hood little mods numbers got revamped and updated, which we knew was gonna happen with the modular study. But everything else, I think, kinda stayed, it, it wasn't a lot changes in our five-year plan, we, we modified some few things, but we knew that this was a two-year request, we got phase one and we get, we said we're gonna work on the high school, they were a year older than the middle school for the most part. So we need this two hundred thousand dollars to complete the middle school, um, a- academic, uh, building. It, we, it's fifty rooms, it's about four thousand per board, and this will help us recomplete that request.
What's the anticipated life of the boards?
They should last ten to twelve years, like, you know, could, you know, could be a little bit longer than that, but we've, we've typically gotten, these are a little bit on, the ones we're replacing are a little bit borrowed time and more than that.
Yep.
But they're within that range, and again, what we did is it's a one, we got rid of the, um, projector, we got rid of the desktop, computer that was in there, um, so it's, it's, we're looking at one piece of equipment as opposed to what was the old, the old model, was there was three pieces of equipment there. So it's a better model, it's, and it's being used pretty well, people are, from what I've heard from Dr. Downs in the walkthrough, people were pleased with it. So this is what's needed. Um, as we look to the future, we're looking to get back to the computer replacement plan, we haven't needed that for a few years now, we're trying to not have that next year, uh, but we think we're okay on going another year without this allotment of funds because of what we have in, um, and what we were able to purchase with COVID money, with grant money, with, um, state earmark money, which continues to come in, although a smaller allotment this year. Um, but we, this does need to return, unfortunately, this was a general fund line item that was reduced, um, to balance the budget this year by about sixty thousand dollars. This was the original plan that we would need about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is about two grades annually to keep the, the one-to-one device program moving along. We haven't, we've had, we've, we've had about four or five years where we haven't had to request that because of grant funding and earmark state funding, but I think that, assuming that dries up and that looks like it could be the case, this would have to return, starting in fiscal year twenty-seven.
Do you mind if I ask a question sort of mid-stream?
Yeah.
Are you saying that we would go more annually to do a replacement? Because I would think you'd almost wanna do it annually to say, okay, do a portion, do a portion, do a portion, do a portion.
The idea is that we would return annually, starting in fiscal twenty-seven.
Okay, and that would be a hundred, a hundred and twenty annually?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to get.
So we had that for a number of years, we had sixty, then we went, we went from, uh, grade six to, to twelve, to K through twelve after COVID. So the amount needed was really a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Um, but we, unfortunately, we have been able to not have this because of the COVID funds that we used.
Gotcha.
Uh, and now it's gonna have to return.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, so that it's about sixty thousand per grade, we wanted to replace two grades per year. We had put one of them into the general fund and the other grade we were trying to do through capital each year.
Correct.
So that we were balancing it off, the goal was eventually to try to get everything into the annual budget, like the operating budget, not have to go through capital at all.
Yeah.
But it's gone the other way because of the fiscal challenges and the only saving grace is we've, we've been able, one of the things that seems to be, you know, has grant money available for it often, so.
Okay, no, I get it, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clear it up in my head.
Um, we do need some funding, additional funding, um, for some staff device replacement in the next few years. So this plan calls for it to be in fiscal twenty-seven. We did, again, coming through COVID, all the staff got a, uh, we got a sort of an influx of capital funds with, with various grants, so every staff had, had a laptop, new laptop around that same COVID time, fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty, twenty-two, those are now five, six years old. So, uh, to keep that program going, we felt like we're trying to do some of them with the general fund money that's there and, and Dr. Downs is managing that and we're replacing thirty to forty devices a year, that's the goal, but we knew there was gonna be a year where we just have a lot coming at the end of their useful life at once because they all were kinda purchased around twenty-one, twenty-two, coming, you know, back from COVID, that we need a little additional funding, so right now this calls for about eighty thousand dollars to do that. Uh, but that's essentially what we're looking at. So this is sort of future technology needs, the instructional equipment, middle school would then, um, you know, every building would have new, new interactive boards, we did elementaries a couple of years ago, high school this past year, so we would be in really good shape if we got that funding. And then the ongoing student devices, some additional funding for staff. We can sort of see what happens over this year and next year if we're able to make, um, do more with what we have with general fund, that, that a request could go down, but right now we wanted to add it in there. And then the next big one would be the wireless infrastructure upgrade at the elementary. So with last year, we did it at the middle school, high school, the elementary was redone in two thousand seventeen, about fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, it's about the eleven-year mark, we would need to consider doing an upgrade there as well. So that's technology. Um, looking at vehicles, we're trying to, we're in pretty good shape right now in vehicles with the special education van we just got, with the, with the truck that's coming in. So we're trying to have a couple of years of not needing a vehicle while we do some big facility items or we're, while we're requesting some large-ticket facility items. Um, but this would be the next van that we would need replacement as part of our special ed program where we have four vehicles, three which operate daily, and then a fourth is a spare. And then, and this is currently the spare, but we feel like we would need to replace that as it does get used frequently when other vehicles are down or through other additional runs that happen and it is getting older, so we feel like in a few years we'd have to consider that for replacement. And then the two thousand sixteen would then become the spare in its place. That's something that we've been doing for a number, number of years now. So again, as I mentioned earlier, this vehicle would then become the backup for two thousand fourteen. Right now it's used every day, used heavily, but once that vehicle, um, is delivered, two thousand nine was traded in as part of that bid. This vehicle is the backup, not really the backup, it's kinda used as the third vehicle for plowing, but it's not used regularly every day, um, but it would be used, uh, for a variety of reasons, but it's important that we have it. So by fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, we'll assess it, we think we might need to consider, uh, purchasing a, a smaller vehicle. We wouldn't, we wouldn't need the full utility rack truck at that point. We would can do, we would make do for a smaller vehicle, so it would be cheaper than, than the replacement, an in-con replacement, but I think it, it, it's gonna need to be replaced. Um, this is what we're looking at for, for vehicles, the special education van, the, uh, third vehicle in the building and grounds department is plowing, and then at some point we continue to kinda push this one off, but it's in good shape or keep the terror, is this tractor, um, that we do use for a variety of purposes. Okay, so the, the facilities, hood and little school modular replacement. So again, we had the, we had the feasibility study done. Feasibility study focused on a few, few areas, this was their ask, was we wanted them to assess the condition of the little school mod and the hood school mod, both were, both are around the same age, they're about twenty-plus years old, two thousand one, two thousand two, they came online. Um, we're gonna on borrow time with them as we know. Um, so they assessed their condition, I did want them to kinda do a full study of just their condition, which they did. Um, look at what it would take to kinda renovate them, repair, the major repairs that would need to be done to extend their life, um, cost that out, which was option one, which they did. Option two was just an in-con replacement, let's take what we have, let's replace it. One's an expanded kind of one and a half unit at the little, one's four standardized units at the hood. If we just remove those, you kind of fabricated what you have, sort of off-site, you dropped in some, the new units that would then last ten, twelve, fifteen years, what would that cost? And then the third, if we tried to do something a little bit different, it would build more permanent structures that would go through fifteen-year life to a thirty-five, forty-year life, potentially it's a permanent struc- permanent building. What would it, that require on both sites? And what's the better site for that, so they kinda looked at that and priced those options out. Then we also kinda asked them to look at something a little bit further, if we would do sort of an expanded, um, unit or expanded structure in, in the, the more appropriate location, which is the hood school. Um, it's a more feasible, it's actually cheaper to do at the hood school because they can make do of some of the foundation work that's there. Um, and we tried to consolidate all on one, one, um, location and tried to capture this, really the six to seven rooms that are needed, that could expand into more of an early childhood type program and provide some, some other options for some specialized program, for some tuition-based programs to be offered in the future, looking at enrollment, looking at the needs, what would that look like? So that was really their ask, which is what they, what they tried to, to do, which is what they did. Um, and we looked at those options, what we're recommending this evening, now, I, we're open for, for feedback if this isn't very expensive, um, every option's expensive, would be to look at the hood and little, little school and the preferred option would be to demolish the little school unit and remove that unit and then consolidate all the needed classrooms at the hood elementary school with an expanded new build. That would really, we feel like we could capture at least six, probably seven classrooms, but when you have a new build, you can kinda better control the design of that. If we're just doing the fabricated, um, mod units, they're gonna be built off-site, we're not gonna have a lot of, we could move around the bathrooms and get more up-to-date, um, newer models that is recommended for today's learning with a new modular building, but if it's a new build, you can really have much more design control over what that space looks like and you pick up some spacing as well that you lose with the, with a mod, modular unit. Um, so we feel like we can capture about seven, seven rooms and we feel like that is sort of the need. Um so we feel like we can capture about seven, seven rooms and we feel like that is sort of the need. Um but that is, that cost is, we're talking, you know, well over four million dollars. And what that looks like is, it would be the cost to remove the little school unit, which is, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars to do that. Um and then to build new um in one of these, these options that they kind of laid out for us. Is we're looking at over, over four million dollars, again, but if we feel like we need that space, which we, we feel like we do. At least, at least six units, the little and the hood space, we can't, all of it and just go, we're gonna do away without the little and just try to get by with three or four. Modular units at the hood. Um we're looking at at least four million dollars anyway. All right, if you look at option two in the study for the little and the hood, if we're just gonna do an in-kind replacement at both those schools. It's gonna cost four million dollars. I think it was like about little, over one point two for the little, um and about two point eight for the hood. So we're still at a four million dollar figure to replace what we have today and keep doing the programs that are there. So for a few hundred thousand dollars more and maybe the, I think with bidding and there could be some efficiencies gained there, it may not, this is sort of like. A high, you know, uh I'm not gonna say worst case at this point, but it's a, it's a conservative budget number that they put together for us. Um, we feel like uh we could capture the, you know, the, the design autonomy that we would want. And the spacing needs that would allow for it and then move to one location, which I think you heard from Ms. Molly and. Um Principal McKay today that that would be a preferred way to go. So that is what we're recommending this evening for, for this, for this project. I know there was a lot of information. They did a lot of um structural design, architectural design work, there was a lot of information in that feasibility study. So I don't know if it maybe might need like a separate meeting to talk about it, but there's, there's a lot of information there. But from what we, the administrative for them stands, hearing feedback from the principals, hearing feedback from Sunny, Kim Pagnon, Director of Facilities. On what we want to do, we do feel like this is the, this is the um desired option. Now, from a, from a time-wise standpoint, it's a little more of a, um it's about a year to build that. You know, it's about a year to kind of procure and, and, you know, it takes, it's gonna take months to. Um go through the process of just procurement and bidding and contracting and, and then it's gonna be like a year build, so. Best, these, even if we appropriate and get the funding this year for a project of this size. We're not, those students aren't moving in until um, you know, September of twenty twenty, twenty six. So we still gotta make do with what we have for a couple more years, in reality, a year and a, year and a half at least.
So, Mr. Connolly, I have, I have a lot of questions on this, but on the one you were just, uh, that last point. If you have to remove the current units and replace it with a bigger build that's gonna take more than a year, what do you do with those students? Sounds like the little school's not using the space, so they would be okay.
Correct.
But what, the hood is using that space right now, what would hap- where would they house those students?
Yeah, so I think what would have to happen is part of the bidding. Construction process is they'd have to, I think they'd have to bring in temporary units that go in a different, in a location, which the hood would be suitable for that.
Okay.
More than the little, but they're probably gonna lose like playground space and, and, but that would, that would be what would have to happen.
Okay, and so, i- if I, if I can just summarize what I, what I recall, I don't have in front of me, so. Option number one, I thought wasn't even an option. Option number one is repairing the.
Correct.
Units that are there.
Yeah.
Is that, is that even an option to repair them or?
They don't like that option. Now, I asked him to price that simply because I want everyone to see, you know, what that would cost. I don't think it's a, it's a great, to try to put that much amount of money into a twenty-year-old structure.
I, I.
Doesn't make sense, but um.
But what, what does?
I was curious to know.
But fixing that only extends the life, what, like, five years?
Yeah, and, and at most.
Having walked it this summer, I'd say one to three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we should, if we're gonna go and, and ask for this much money, I think we should know the answer to that, like, like, cause. The, the, the study made it look like all three of them were options on the same level, but if it only is extending it. For three years or five years versus twenty years or whatever, I think that's really important to know. And then the question is, if it's gonna take thirty to forty thousand to remove the little school modular.
Yeah.
How much was it to fix the little school modular?
Um, it was like seven, seven hundred, eight hundred.
Was it that much for option one? I thought option one was a lot less than that for little school. I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me. Did you have the study there? It's a study, it's the hundred-page study. Kind of just wondering like if, if that space could be extended also to, rather than removing it, if you could fix it.
Five hundred, over five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, just to fix it, option one?
Yes.
All right, never mind.
Yeah.
Okay, so if option one's out, option two versus option three. If the study did not talk about the option that we're talking about, moving a bigger project at the hood school. But each of those, two versus three was within a hundred thousand dollars, it was about a hundred thousand dollars each of them. One of them was actually a hundred thousand dollars cheaper to build a permanent structure. And the other was like a hundred thousand more to.
Yeah.
To build the, you know, one, one was one way, one was the other.
Right.
When we were projecting, the thinking about this a couple of years ago, we thought it was gonna be twice as expensive to do a new build. The fact that they're almost the same price.
Right.
Is insane to me because if we put a modular there, we're gonna be in the exact same issue. And an, you know, the life, when the life of the modular ends. And that's not even being factored into the pricing right now, that you're gonna have to replace the entire thing again much sooner than with a new one, so I mean.
Correct.
The fact that they're the same price, if you look at both of the units. Personally, I don't even think there's a discussion here. I mean, you could build a brand-new facility. That's a permanent structure for the same price as replacing both of them.
Could I have a discussion?
Yes, go ahead. But I, I just wanna make sure I was reading.
No, you are reading here right, and we were, we were surprised by that, but we, actually Sunny was saying that he thought that might be the case all along.
Yeah, my, the, the only concern I'd have is like if we have to move more to the hood school, that's the only concern.
That's where I wanna go.
Right.
There's, what would happen to redistricting, busing, all the ancillary elements of if we do this? What's the downstream?
Well, I, what we're, what we're looking at is.
Not one through five.
Yeah, it's not.
No, I get it.
Unfortunately, it's not even kindergarten. We're really looking at the preschool programs.
Yeah.
And all of the kindergarten programs at, in the hood district being housed in this structure. And the ability and flexibility to do some more specialized programming. Maybe a tuition-based program, maybe more of the specialized, expanded sped programs in this structure, early childhood structure. The kin- it's still the kindergarten, the kindergarten at the, at the little. And the, and the, and the batch would still exist in those, in those, so it's not really like a true K through.
No, no, no.
K, early childhood.
So pre-K right now is at the little school, it would just be at the hood.
No, where I'm going with this is.
Yeah.
Similar to what you were saying earlier, what I wanna know in presenting it is what are the numbers of impact? The, the numbers of families impacted or students impacted to show exactly that.
Right.
It's not as big as, it, it, it's not the minimus.
Yeah, it's not.
People will be impacted, but we could start talking about, here are the numbers. What is the impact versus what do we get?
Right, so it, right now, we're really talking about two preschool programs that are housed at the little, full-day programs. Not a huge population of students and, and students that are, that are not just little school district students, would just transfer over to the hood school.
No, I, I agree with it, it's just in presenting it for.
Right.
Capital expenditure, I think we need to be specific about that.
Again, let's not use the word redistrict because we're not redistricting at all.
Well, no, but it's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, point out, I mean.
That is very.
We're not, it's just, it's just right now, the little school houses all the pre-K.
Right.
Now the hood would house all the pre-K. And, yeah, and, and my only question is if it should be even bigger if you're building it because. I would like to see a lot of tuition-based things and seeing like, can, could we use to rent space to the collaboratives? And actually get some revenue from that, probably not a lot of revenue, but that would be, the only question to me would be. What is, what is a proper size, looking at, you know, okay, if you can get that extra classroom, that extra space that you could use. You know, that you could actually rent out, maybe there's, you know, some other rental opportunities or whatever, like. That would be the thing, is figuring out what the right size is, but if it's the same price to get a permanent unit versus two modulators. I don't even think there's a question in my mind. Dr. Daly?
Most likely we'd be talking about option A.
Correct.
Like that's the most uh viable of those options. I was kind of excited about D, but um either way, with A. We believe with the modulators, the classrooms have to be the modular size. I think we have a little more flexibility.
Yeah.
With this piece, and we think we could get six, maybe seven.
You think so, yeah.
Someone earlier said eight. Um and, and what those programs are, we, we wouldn't necessarily know. One idea would be, would be pre-K. Um but there's other ideas too, there's consolidation of other programs, English language, uh, English language learners. Um, you know, we do have, there are pre-K classes at the hood now. So even if you did bring all the pre-K there, now you would have all the pre-K, right, so. Those are some of the considerations that we have, and some of the programs that are at the hood that are really in need of space. Might not need a full-size space, so we could have a few smaller spaces, which would then free up other classrooms.
Right.
One of the keys with trying to find those early childhood rooms is the bathroom, so we have a ba- we have a class right now at the. At the hood kindergarten that doesn't have the bathroom, which is sort of a challenge. So just having those.
Yeah.
That flexibility would be really key.
And just so you know, from a cost standpoint, we added about twenty-five hundred square foot to the. The existing um square foot area that's shown in kind of option E, I guess it says there. Um, which allowed us to get to that's seven, that's, that's seven classroom space. If we're gonna keep going higher, then it's gonna, that, that cost's gonna go up and up. So we looked at like, we're gonna have what we have, which is option E, rebuild that, there's a really, really wide hallway. That you can almost kind of see by the roofing structure, there's like those lines in the middle here.
Yeah.
That hallway does not need to be that wide in a, in a redesigned buil- building. You can gain some space. And then you pick up all of like an option A, which is the more feasible building, there's some. Leaching su- uh structure issues that are over on option C. Um and then there was some complications with rolling an option D with the building, but you would capture, you would capture. You know, fifty percent more space by doing that, and that's what the pricing was based on, just so you know.
So, so pricing is based on E with A?
Yes.
So E, E I believe was the second story.
Ah, yeah, E was the second story.
It was the second story, which we.
Correct.
Very solid foundation, but they, they said that it costs prohibitive in that, once you get into the second story, you need an elevator, you need fire access. So we were kind of thinking maybe that was a way to do it because the footprint's already there, but it's not like your home where you just add another floor. You need all those accessibility pieces, which would make it cost prohibitive, so they felt A seemed to be the most feasible. So go in that land and go right out there.
Right, and, and, and I'm not, I mean, you also have to figure, these are students, young students, on stairs and things like that, but um. So E, right now, the modulators are where, where option E is, is that what we're looking at?
That is the space.
It's that.
That, where ob- where it says option E in those arrows, that's the existing.
That's the existing modulars.
Rooftop minutes above each classroom, those are the four classrooms.
Okay, so that would be removed and it would be replaced with things, right, where option E is and where option A is, that we're saying?
Yep, that's, that's the, that's the idea.
And where D is, is sort of just this long hallway that I was also hoping that we could capture some of that space, but. I think there's a little bit problematic with that site too, but there's a chance that maybe we could get a little bit more.
Yeah, I think you probably could. Obviously, it would be a connected building too, we're not, not gonna be going outside too. I mean, the big question is how do we afford it at all, and that's capital's problem, but like. But we have to get rid of the modulators and it's cheaper than building a new school and.
So it's cost neutral to putting new modulators in, and having walked those modulators that are barely functional now, they obviously need to be replaced. Probably.
Yeah.
Immediately.
It's cost neutral to replace the modulators and it's more expensive than trying to fix them, but that only extends the problem for a few more years, we don't know how long that is.
Well, but one of the floors isn't, like, you could roll a bowling ball down it, it's not even level, so you'd have to assume.
You're problematic. I mean, I, I, you guys look at the photos that were in that design.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's holes in, in the found, in um the siding, there's holes in the roof, it just, there's.
It's not pretty.
There's issues.
So is the foundation what's driving, I'm stunned to see the price neutral, is it the foundation that, at the hood school, that saw, that we saw this summer, is that what's driving the?
The hood school is the more desired location because it does have a full foundation.
That's what I'm wondering, is that what's giving us that savings to be able to build them for about the same price?
Correct. Correct.
It's the same as rebuilding both, so we're moving. Right, right, right.
Right, the little school has no foundation.
Right, oh, I just remembered seeing at the hood, I was more impressed with the foundation than I was about, that was a nice.
I, what, what, what was very surprising to me is that the little school, is the little school one they, that they recommended replacing? And the hood is the one they recommended building a new, new structure? Cause one of them was a hundred thousand one way or the other, and one of them, the recommendation was two, one was recommend three, was the little option two that was recommended?
Yeah, I don't know if they ever came out and said, I think they just more said, these are, these are the issues and these are the.
No, I said, like, the first page said, uh, one, uh, recommend, uh, two versus three because of a hundred thousand dollars, but. What was seemed different, odd to me, because we didn't have the number of the combined one. If you look at option three for each, the hood and the little, is the combined cheaper than the option three of each, the little and the hood? Cause I don't think the study had the four point three five in there, right? That was a new one. The study, what I'm wondering is the combined cost of option three on both of them?
So option three at the little is, is two point, call it two point eight million?
Two point eight.
Option three at the hood. Sorry, option two at the, the hood was two point eight.
Hood was two point eight.
Yeah, sorry, and then the little was above one point two. So again, it's not, I said, I said a four million dollar number, it, it's within a hundred thousand dollars, it's the same as the malls.
But I'm just wondering, like, cause it's four point three five to do a new one, just at one school, but. The one point two and the two point eight are new builds at both of those schools.
Correct.
And it's actually three hundred fifty thousand dollars cheaper to build two different places?
We're, we're, we're expand, we're making it a little bit.
Okay, so this is the bigger, this is, this is bigger than those two. So it's not the combined of those two?
What's also included in here though is the removal and demo of the little.
Oh, true.
So that's not, that's within, that's in that number too.
Yeah, okay. I mean, that's the only question, I think that is, is it better to keep it at two different places or not, but. I mean, the little school, in terms of new growth in the, in the area. The other thing to think about is, if to, talked about redistricting, which I said I'm not going to, but if there was a. New build on Elm Street, or, you know, down at the other end of town. None of those kids are gonna go to the little school.
Right.
They're gonna be bachelor hood over, uh, over there.
Hoods had an increase of over ninety students. They were, they were about the same enrollment for several years.
Yeah.
It is about ninety students for now. Some of that is the two programs that were seen programs now are hood programs, so we've moved into the building.
Yeah.
That's happening as well.
I mean, in term, in, in terms of strategy, um. I mean, is, are there any other things that we really, it sounds like we don't really need anything else this year, other than the two hundred and then, I know you have a, the hood.
Roof.
Roof next, but um, the two hundred, we put first and then we put.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if this is something the capital committee would consider removing this from the. Capital process and looking at it a little bit differently, which is what they did with the little, little school roof. Um, just because obviously this is, this would ta- tie up everything, I know there's needs on the town side, but.
Would there be any, I mean, this has to, I think, be outside of the typical capital?
Yes.
Would the, would, would there be any way to, through MSBA to get any of this funded, like?
So I think we can pursue that. Um, I don't know of any yet, but I think we need, I think we need to look in that for, it's possible.
What's the timeline of that though, cause the need is urgent for this?
Yeah, so that, that does slow it down, so that was part of the, the challenge of um looking at. The malls and replay, it's, I, it's gonna be, it's almost like a two-year process just to get it approved.
I know.
So it's, that's, that was with the roof, I mean, with the hood school roof, it's, it's a process to get in their pipeline, to get on the board's schedule. Go through the design, get it approved, show that you, your community is able to support it and move through that channel, it's about a two-year process.
And that would, I mean, it would push it out two years, so it would make it more expensive there, because of the. Builders that come in, it would make it more expensive, so it would probably make it a five or six million dollar project.
Yeah.
Which would then be, we could maybe get reimbursed like half of it, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's in that forty-eight percent range.
I mean, it still would lower it, the cost out of hand to two and a half to three million theoretically, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but um. I think we'd have, I think we really have to look at that as well and see if we could.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted this group to look at it, they just kind of ran out of time, to be honest.
Yeah.
What, so they, that was, I asked them to try to explore it.
But again, for, for our, our standpoint, I mean, we've talked about this for a number of years. But again, for, for our, our standpoint, I mean, we've talked about this for a number of years. I think we need to do it. Did anybody else disagree? I mean, I, I mean, I think, I think it's, I, I think it has to be at the hood and it has to be new versus like a modular that has to be replaced again.
No, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, totally agree.
You wanna move on to the hood?
Yes. So everything on phase one of this project seems to be going well. The next part of that, which was laid out and we, was to seal and coat um, the roof. And ideally, I mean, I honestly, I think I may have said, I would have loved to, I would love to kind of do all this at once. It might be more efficient to do that while they're there. Uh, but keeping in mind what we're asking for with the mods and where we're at, we've sort of recommended this be done in two phases. Now, originally, this was pushed out even further, another year and it was, but I, I like this approach a little bit better where we do uh, roof sections A, B, C, D, and E next year. We have the bids already came in for this. So I know that's a pretty good number right now, five hundred and fifty thousand to do that. And then phase three would be roof areas F, G, H, I, and J. And I think looking at that photo, essentially, this area here is predominantly what we're talking about in the year, year one. And then this area here would be year two.
Can, can you just refresh my memory? I think, I thought last year we, we got numbers, cause we were looking at having to replace the entire roof. And we got good news from the survey that said, oh, we don't have to do that. But
Yep.
if we're talking about four fifty and five fifty, that's a million, plus whatever phase one was, we're getting pretty close to what the cost was, I thought, to replace the entire roof, aren't we? Or did we know that there were gonna be three phases?
That was up, uh, like over three million dollars.
It was over three million?
Yeah, so.
That's what I couldn't remember, so.
So we landed on around one point two million to do, to do this restoration project. Again, the, the little school roof, you know, now, six, seven years ago, two thousand seventeen, eighteen was a total of one point eight, eight million.
Right. Somehow I thought the number was less than one point two, but maybe it was just phase one we were looking at.
Phase one is very small project, two hundred thousand dollars, and it's basically a million to do the re- the remainder. So it, it was about one point, at one point two.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, by the outlook of facility, again, the modular units, the biggest piece of it, the hood school roof. We want to revisit electronic systems and what we can do with, with um, looking at the next piece of that, which could be the, um, the access into the buildings, the security, you know, camera systems and so forth, looking at the latest software, but we, you know, that's, I think we're in good shape. If there's other technology out there, we'd wanna look at in the coming years. The waste water treatment plant, we would need to look at those membranes, which have about a five to seven-year life. We did it in fiscal year nineteen twenty, just before the pandemic. So that's an area we'd have to look at, especially the, if the town is gonna con- continue to look at tapping into that, it might, quite honestly, it might even have to be done sooner than that, and they might have to help us with that. So, but um, it is in the plan. And then I would love to revisit, this has been on the plan for a number of years, it gets deferred, but um, the hood school with the boi- is, with the new boilers, it's, again, it's, what's automated in the logic system is only the boilers only. Um, the little school project a cou- few years ago, we were able to get the entire building online. I think we've seen savings. So I would love to do that with the, at the hood school as well. And then this is something that's still out there. I don't know if it's realistic to say capital's gonna take that on, but I know it's still being talked about, is athletic field lighting.
And that's for the grass field?
That would be for the grass field, soccer field area and the outfield of, of the base, Cary Park.
Shouldn't the membranes not be in ours anymore? Won't, when, when the new project to tie in happens, shouldn't that be turned, the manager turn over?
Yeah, so that might hap- correct. So I have it on there, just so it's on everyone's radar that it needs to happen. But I think if that were.
What's the timing of, of tying in? Cause I, I think they're trying to do it this year, right?
Changes. I mean, I heard it could be at early, it's late summer this fall, but I think that,
Yeah.
I think it's later now. Obviously, next summer, maybe? Summer project? The summer, yeah.
Okay. Kick that over to the town side.
Yeah, that, that was what would happen.
Yeah, there's always, there's always.
I think they understand that that is the case, the last conversation I was on, that these membrane, that things would have to happen. Yeah.
Wasn't there a discussion about that happening when they do the other work?
Yeah.
Right.
Correct. Um, so that could come off. Um, so this is what we're looking at for, for, for FY twenty-six, which is what they'll spend, excuse me, the majority of the time on. Again, I mean, I don't know if a priority standpoint, to me, I just put technology, let's get that project done. And then obviously the mods and then the, the roof was what I, is the order I put it in.
And the four point three, does that include the temporary housing for the year?
Yeah, it should be all in that construction cost that we would need.
I mean, usually we have more policy fights about this, but I don't think there's much to fight about here.
Is there a way to keep the little school modular open while you're doing the hood and try to?
Yeah, I think, yes, there is, correct. I think that's part of it. Yep.
It's funny, I'd, I'd almost, yes, it's a number two priority, but I'd almost put it to the side and say, it's just a different class of thing.
Yeah, I know. So.
And that's what CIPC is gonna have to do, basically, cause they can't.
Yep.
They don't have the money in the, in the project for that.
No, I know.
And there's no way to really divide that up into multiple years. We can't really easily do phase one, phase two, phase three, other than.
I know.
Having a building halfway done for three years.
No payment plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some money down.
We know it's kind of been out there for a while and here we are though.
Yep.
This is the process. I think we all know what's happening. October, November, we're, we're looking for approval, submit to the CIPC, we'll present in November and December. Maybe in January, they'll rank, as they normally do, they'll do field trips, they'll ask a lot of questions. Select board town meeting approval, April through June. All right. I think we took questions as we go.
I mean, what, what, what would happen if we didn't reply? I mean, do we not have space? If we remove the modulars? I mean, cause the, the little school is saying they don't need that space right now.
Correct. So I was, I mean, I think not looking big picture, but just looking from a cost standpoint, and I talked about this with Dr. Daly in my office for a while, like, if, if you just initially do the hood school and look to do the three or four units, and that becomes more like a two point eight pro- million dollar project, and then do you see what happens down the line? But it's, I think it's narrow sighted.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not even saying that. I'm saying, we, we, we are using the hood school, like, we don't have a place for that. If we didn't, if we didn't have the modular units there, we, we wouldn't have a space for the students that are in those, in the, in the hood now.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, yeah.
Something that will have to do with the fact we didn't have the first grades this year too?
Yeah, right. If that, if the budget's fully off.
So they had that flexibility?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, so I know it's a, a big number. I mean, I think we typically look for sort of endorsement of the project, how it has presented or so I can submit those sheets, CIPC sheets that they ask for.
I usually try to have something to change, but I don't do as much change this year.
Yeah.
Um, any discussion, any change of the order here?
The only other thing I'd think about is, I don't, I'm gonna ask a terrible question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. What's the lifespan of the rest of the school? Like, if we were to try and?
I know. I mean, I've, I.
And I talked about this at CIPC too. I floated the same thing.
So obviously, with, if we do the roof, we get twenty-year, we get, we get twenty-year warranty on that roof.
But we're talking roof and a part of the building. We're gonna Frankenstein this thing.
I know. I, I did ask that.
But the hood school, i- internally, the hood school, I think, was updated more recently than little school though. The little school, I think, actually is the worst inside.
Correct.
The hood school is better than the little school, little school inside.
Let me rephrase it a little bit. If we needed to replace the rest of the school, could it still be done with this standing? So in other words, okay, replace the rest of it, now we've got a piece that was just built.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm gonna say yes. I believe you can. Yeah.
You see where I'm going? It's like.
Yeah, but I don't, yeah. I don't know if you're building another school right there.
I think you're renovating, yeah.
Fair. Like I said, it wasn't a great question to begin with.
Yeah. I mean, do we think we're, we're gonna rebuild new? Are we gonna do like a renovation? Like, what's that gonna look like? You know?
Yeah, but a new school project is.
It's a big deal. It's not a chance in heck that it's gonna get approved this year. Get that?
I mean, this is a bigger school, so, but.
I, I think we're all, I mean, twenty years, right, for that, the mod- the most we get out of mods, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, is there a chance this, this structure, we would build it for three hundred thousand more than, um, last that? Hopefully, the building is there for twenty years, but the building, for the twenty-five, for the thirty, we, we might hope for that. If not, there's a lot of different possibilities there. But like you said, if there's a development that goes in somewhere, we need to build another school somewhere on a different site, that's,
Right.
it's very hard to predict all of that.
No, no, that's fair.
But this, you know, I just wanna reiterate again, thanks to Michael and all his great work and Sonny and all their great work.
It's awesome.
You know, we've, we've got, and, and the principals, and everyone, we've got so much more out of those modular units than they were ever designed for. This isn't something new coming out of nowhere. We've been talking about this for many, many years. Everybody knows this is coming and that we've gotten way more out of uh, those units for their value. They're well beyond the life, but we've, we've made it work, so.
Yeah, this isn't a surprise to CIPC. This is, this has been talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and the other thing, just to put on the record here, is, is a safety issue. I mean, we look at some of those photos, like, it's, it's in a state of, of disrepair that is getting on the point where we have to be careful. I mean, we have young students in these buildings and you know, the, the old facilities manager, I forget his name, always said, you know, my job's to keep people warm and, you know,
Dry.
warm and dry and what was the other one? Safe. But like, but again, like, we're, we're not, we're not meeting those basic needs in these units right now. And we're, we're asking kids to go into these rooms that are not, are not appropriate right now. And so, I mean, at the end of the day, we have to be very careful about that and we can talk all about the money, but you know, and it, it's an important discussion to have, but we also can't be sending students into rooms that are unsafe. Um, we'll have bigger issues there, so um.
Agree.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate all the work from Mr. Connolly on putting this together and, you know, again, we, we need to get the information and put it before and people beyond the school committee will talk about it, but for the purposes of tonight, all we can do is put this list out there and I'm a, I, I'm in agreement with the list. If somebody wants to make a motion to approve the recommended CIPC, what, or draft order? I mean, the order for, uh, for us.
Move to approve the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, uh, CIPC, uh, capital improvement.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. We have a couple of appointments. Dr. Daly's not busy enough, so he wants to serve on the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors and the SEAM Collaborative Board of Directors. I'll just say, Dr. Daly, you've done excellent work on all of these. I know you're a leader amongst these boards and it is also getting late. Um, I don't know that you want to talk much about these. Do you wanna talk a little bit about these or do you want just to be reappointed?
I very much hope to be reappointed as I'm on the boards. Um, I, I'm no longer the chair of SEAM, but I think it would be, it's basically by contract that I need to be appointed, so it's somewhat a formality.
There we go. Do you wanna make those two motions?
I'll let someone else do this.
Come on, somebody, okay. No, I'll do it.
Um, uh, move to approve the appointment of Dr. Daly to the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors for the one-year term running from July first, um, to June thirtieth.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Do you want me to move right into this one?
Keep going.
Uh, move to approve, um, the, uh, appointment of, uh, Dr. Daly as the North Ring representative to the SEAM Collaborative Board of Directors, um, for the one-year term from July first, twenty twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Daly. And we would be winding the meeting down, but instead, we're gonna wrap it up the social media, so.
Get it.
Are we, did we kill the owl?
I think we lost our, our video feed, but.
Oh, God, this won't be. We can pause for a moment. And see what happens.
Do you like to start this?
Yeah, are we, are we on? I just wanna make sure it's on.
I don't know.
Tim, are you using your wife's account?
No, I think it's my wife.
Oh.
He said he had a big part to play tonight, so she wanted to listen in.
I, I can, I can, I don't know that the camera's on, but I can, the audio's on and I can share the presentation.
Audio's on, okay, good. So, do you wanna start us off, Dr. Daly or, or Mr. Sutherland and Miss Linders?
Tim.
Tim, you wanna lead us off?
Yeah, I'd be too.
Go ahead.
All right, so, um, the presentation, okay. So why don't we just, well, I'll try to move briefly through the meat of this. I think it's fairly straightforward, at least in the upfront part, uh, to really drive, uh, discussion.
Wait, what is social media? Okay.
We're not, yeah, we'll go to one-on-one. Right, so, so really, why we're here, why we're talking about this, uh, right, we're revisiting our goals for this year that we talked about, uh, in late August, early September. Right, so one of our main goals that Jennifer and I graciously accepted and took on this year was, uh, supporting the superintendent and communicating the town impacts of the budget cuts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and the potential impacts for twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, so Jennifer and I have been talking about this over the last several weeks. Uh, and really, we started to talk about some of the root cause of, of where we thought the school committee could go in this year to help meet that goal. So we looked a little bit as to why social media matters. Um, over sixty-six percent of the adults in the US use social media. Uh, the average adult in the US, and this shocked me when I saw this, the average adult spends more than two hours per day on social media. Uh, and in North Reading alone, the reach of just Meta reaches four thousand daily North Reading residents. I mean, it's four thousand people on a daily basis. Not necessarily the same four thousand people, but on average, it reaches four thousand people every single day in the town of North Reading. Uh, on the right, you kind of see that, that usage, right? Well, where are the platforms being used the most? YouTube, right, obviously, all the videos. But then you see a lot of the Meta accounts, Facebook, Instagram, you know, TikTok, and, and it goes down from there. There is a huge breadth of, uh, individuals using social media. We go to slide four. So social media in the news. So what, really what we've found is, social media, uh, for right, wrong, or indifferent, is tradi- is replacing the traditional news outlets. Uh, primarily because of speed, convenience, and the ability to interact with other users. But unlike, uh, social media, uh, unlike traditional media, right, social media is not edited, fact-checked, or under any journalistic standards, right? So we know when we see something in the transcript about town, we know that it's been through an editorial review process and before it's published to, to the paper. Uh, that obviously does not happen on social media. Organizations across town, uh, so, including the school committee, we're continually working to correct information that's presented out in the community as facts. And I know, uh, many of us throughout the, the year and years that they've served have had to do that on a number of occasions. And on the right-hand side, what you see here is, right, the, the, the first chart there just shows the convenience of social media is people are looking for the immediate feedback of social media. They wanna be able to get information in real time. That is obviously not surprising. But then the other one, again, the more, uh, probably the more compelling, is that uh, over fifty percent of the population often or sometimes use social media as their primary source of news. Right? So that is where people are going to get information. So, uh, you know, Jen and I have been talking about in the sphere of the, of, sorry, um, the considerations. So the other thing to think about here, if we're look, thinking about, sorry, go to the next one, Dr. Daly. One of the obvious things to think about, uh, if we're talking about potential use of social media from the school committee, is our, you know, well, how does the Massachusetts Association of School Committees think about this and what does it mean, right? Um, there is policy that provides for both school committees, administrators and school personnel, to use social media in a responsible way and communicate with the community, which we'll get into. Obviously, special care must be taken to ensure compliance with open meeting law. Special care must be taken to ensure compliance with public records and retention. And special care must be taken to ensure student-staff confidentiality, right? And that's called right out within the MASC guidelines. Go to the next one. Okay, so, um, so our recommendation for today, really more of a discussion for today, um, Okay, so, um, so our recommendation for today, really more of a discussion for today, um, what Jen and I have been talking about is establishing a school committee policy that prescribes the school committee's use of social media, and that would be something that Jennifer and I would bring back to the policy subcommittee based on our discussion today, on, uh, on a policy first and second reading of what the school committee felt was appropriate. Um, potentially, the establishment of a social media subcommittee who would be responsible for promoting social media content, that was approved by a school committee, at regular school committee meetings. Um, and then again, third, school committee, by routinely approving topics at school committee meetings in an open and public way, to be able to give authority to the social media subcommittee, to be able to get information out to the community on a more regular basis, um, for consideration across town. Uh, if we go to the next one, so, really, th- this is more of a first slide, but what I, what we did here is, we took the MASC policy that they provide as part of their, um, inclusion standards for inclusion, this is policy KCDB, I believe, that they include, which we don't, do not currently have in town. And you could potentially see a scenario where we can set up, um, really, a, a bifocal lens here, where the North Reading Public Schools would maintain, uh, their own district website, social media accounts as authorized by the superintendent, which is what we do today, and have a separate, and separate, separately maintain social media accounts specifically for the school committee to be able to send out messaging to the community. Um, that is kind of the, the vision or the talking point that we certainly wanted to bring forward to the, the larger school committee here today. Um, is, is that, the, the concept of having basically the, the schools go and act how they, how they have been, and adding in a school committee portion within policy to be able to describe how the school committee would operate within social media. Um, and to be clear here, and, and, uh, Dr. Daly and I had a discussion about this earlier this morning, really, the vision in here is to, to have the ability to be able to send factoids out to the community, um, to be able to post those factoids out to, um, for, for people's consumption and understanding different facts, or budget issues, or anything else that we find we need without, throughout the school year, to get facts out to the community. Uh, what is not being proposed here, to be crystal clear, is, uh, and I know Jen, Jennifer and I talked about this at length, we are not proposing the creation of a social media page that is, uh, monitored, uh, moderated, commented. Really, what we're looking for is more of a Twitter-like environment with a "did you know?" or frequently asked question that the school committee then can promote this information throughout the community, and give the community an avenue to come to a presentation by Dr. Daly, to a meeting that the school committee is holding, to other community engagements, to help further engage and hit that reach that, that we think can be improved. I think one of the things, um, that Jen and I have talked about is, we think that the, the school committee, Dr. Daly, Mr. Connolly, we did a great job in the, in the spring of presenting data that probably had a reach of somewhere between fifty and a hundred, maybe two hundred people at most across town, right? Everyone did such a great job, and then the data was compelling, but the reach wasn't there, so how can we find ways to get reach? Um, and I recall, we, we did a, uh, an event at the library, Scott attended, we had several select board members attend, and I think we had three members of the, the community attend.
One to begin.
One to begin, and-
And then I think one or two came in.
And, and part of this is, how do we get that information out? How do we get the community engaged with simple, easy-to-digest pieces of information that will help drive discussion around town and be able to bring that in? So, that's what, one of the things I, I certainly wanted to make clear, is that we are not looking to create a all-encompassing community connection type page with moderation and school committee members participating, because we think that's the very wrong avenue for social media, but there has to be, I think, a middle ground where we have the ability to engage those four thousand-plus strong, and that was just on Facebook. So, we'd have to go look at Instagram and other to say, is there reach there to be able to get information, like school enrollment, or like the average spending per student? Or these little factoids that we were sending out all spring, but the reach just wasn't quite there. Uh, Jen, do you wanna, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, no, I think just it's, it, you know, it's, it was the goal assigned to Tim and I, and I think because of kind of the network we made with the campaign, and a lot of our campaigning was on, was online, and I think in order for us to be successful, this is the way to go about it, in order to reach people, and then, we can also, if we're putting these online, again, not to moderate a forum, but then, other organizations in town, like parent associations and youth sports or anything like that, can then share these factoids too, for their, for their audiences that may not necessarily be coming to the school committee page, we can all share it if we would like, on our, on our different pages and things like that, but it's the best way to, to meet people. And I think that, um, it was really smart of Tim to bring it up now with the meeting schedule we have, because it's gonna come so quick. And I think that was a little bit of the criticism last time, that people didn't feel like they had enough time, even though there were many meetings going on, it just wasn't getting the reach.
And then I think just one more page, Dr. Daly, uh, and this was just, again, again, concept open for discussion, really the thought of, of the creation of a separate subcommittee who was really chartered of making sure that the factoids were created in collaboration with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, director of special education if necessary, technology to cross over to there, or school principals, depending on the type of factoid or type of information that was going to be required. Much like the athletic subcommittee, our fine arts subcommittee, to have a collaborative, uh, subcommittee that was responsible for ensuring that it reflected a true fact about the school district.
And we're not looking to add any subcommittees to you guys, it would make sense, since we're on the policy subcommittee, and it's our, and that's our, our assigned goal, that, that we would also be the two school committee members on the social media subcommittee.
Oh.
Okay. I think there was one more, do you want?
There, really, well, I mean, it was just, we, Jen and I started brainstorming potential topics, but let's stop, but really, it was just, what are the, the big things, the big tech items, I think we know, we're all aware of, and, and Jen and I have been bouncing around several ideas, but we know special education is a big one, that I think the community could certainly be more informed, busing and transportation costs is another one that skyrocketed over the years, administrative size, school enrollment sizes, all the, I mean, that, those are kind of, that's a low-hanging fruit, I think.
Yeah.
But there are a number of topics that have come up over the last eight, twelve weeks, um, that would probably deserve a little consideration of getting just basic, you know, those bumper sticker-type digimail statements out to the community that are fact-checked, sourced, and can, and have an authority to come back to, whether it be the school committee or Dr. Daly, to say, this is the fact of the situation, here's what it means, or, or could potentially mean to the community in any decisions that they make.
Very good. Nice presentation. I think the only thing, I, I think we might wanna talk a little bit more about the counterpoint, and, and make sure, just to put that on the record as well, about open meeting law, and, and just gotta know that if, if anybody's listening, but I don't know if, um, everybody really understands what that is either, do you wanna talk a little bit more about open meeting law, do you want me to talk a little bit about it, or, I mean, what, what?
Yeah, so I, yeah, well, I certainly, we can certainly talk about it in the context of what we're proposing here, right, so-
Well, 'cause even, even, even like the idea of putting something on social media, like, if you individually post, like, there's no, there's no restriction on any in, one individual posting their own stuff.
Correct.
But, if two other of us actually like it, it can actually be violation of open meeting law. And that's, just to kind of put out there, like, that's, that's the challenge with what this is, whereas, like, if the district puts something out there, they're not subject to open meeting law, and that ends up being the challenge. And the other general challenge is, no one person can speak for the committee, only the committee can speak for the committee. And it's trying to draft a policy, it's trying to find ways to operate where we are staying within those guidelines, where none of us are speaking on behalf of the committee, and we aren't violating open meeting law, and that's just my, I mean, that's my concern on the law part of it, I mean, social media on its own has some challenges, and, yeah, so-
I mean, I think the, the good news there is, I think that's something that if we were to, again, I think that's something that we would take up as part of the policy subcommittee. Uh, MASC does have a significant number of resources on social media, and, uh, and ways that the schools committees can appropriately use them and train school committee members on, on what, and, and we could figure out what to put in policy, and then what would be part of it, you know, this is part of your-
Yeah.
Add school committee, your roles and responsibilities, uh, but I will say, MASC has no shortage of recess, re- resources, as I was looking on the website, of, here are the proper channels, and there, there is a, a fair amount of encouragement in this age of the, getting information out, so I was, um, pleased to see the amount of-
Yeah.
readily, readily available information to help coach, and school committees on how to accomplish this.
Yeah, and, and again, like, I mean, I, I am very hesitant, but at the same time, I'm very realistic that we need to get messaging out, I mean, the-
Yeah.
North Reading Community Connection page has eight thousand eight hundred members on there, and the reality is, when a discussion topic comes up, a really heated one might have thirty different people to comment on a hu- on a hundred comments, but, but the bigger reality is, there's four thousand people that might read it.
Right.
You know, I mean, I'm sure all of us read the things that are on there, and we never go into it. Um, so I'd be interested to see a policy. I, I will just put my thoughts out there to maybe begin things, I would wanna start very, very tight and thr- and tight to the vest. Um, I would think, number one, saying a meeting is coming up, and here's the, here's what we're gonna be talking about, maybe a summary afterwards, sharing materials that were shared, you know, to get that out there to start with. Um, I, I think that's the key thing, is just getting that information out there on a, on a regular basis to say, because, you know, we're very fortunate that we have covered in the transcript now with, with Mr. Zola, but he, he puts out what he thinks is most important out there, like, everything is not put out there, um, but the challenge is even like, you know, even like, i- if, if, if the two of you decide on what to put out there, it's still just your opinions of, of that, so I think the more we can be factual and go back to, you know, like, we just voted on the, the project, here are the actual materials that, you know, here's the order of what we're gonna be recommending to CIPC, and it's just, the further you get away from just the actual documentation, is where we end up in challenges, and I appreciate everybody on this committee and their, you know, their intentions, and we're, we are very much uni- you know, unison in how we're voting, but that's not always gonna be the case, and I don't know, I, I, I just think we have to start, I, I think, starting with the policy and starting very str- because, again, right now, we don't even say that there's a meeting, you know, and this is what we're gonna be talking about, and so, nobody's online, and so, we should do a better job of starting there, the question is how far we get, and my suggestion would be, rather than saying, this is where we wanna get to, we at least start with a very basic thing, um, 'cause like, i- and even having a subcommittee with that many people on, I don't think you can have a subcommittee with that many people on it, where, I mean, unless you're doing the subcommittee meeting right after a meeting, so that you post it the next day every time, and you just kind of come up with, this is what it would be, I, I don't know, I don't know, how would, how would you, how would that subcommittee operate to try to then post things, like, from the meetings?
Yeah, well, I think, well, that's when, when the policy would have to be written, 'cause Tim and I talked about that, we don't want it just to be that, we can only post every, every two weeks about what was going on at the meeting, 'cause that's not kind of the, the goal of this.
Right, that's, that's a challenge, and if you get, just to finish up, um, I, I mean, and again, then, then sharing, obviously resharing other people's stuff, like, sharing, like, you know, Dr. Daly's stuff and Michael Connelly's stuff, but i- if you're not just posting that, but then you're inserting your own thoughts as the school committee, as opposed to doing it on your own personal page, and I do think I have an issue with that, where if, the further you get away from what the, uh, meeting is saying, then you're getting your personal thoughts in there under the school committee account, then you're speaking for the school committee as opposed to summarizing what was said in this meeting.
So, I would-
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna go a slightly different direction.
Yeah.
So, there.
Go on. That's, that's why we have discussions, in open meetings.
So, for me, if you're gonna use social media, treat it like social media, don't treat it like this meeting.
Yeah.
Don't, I, I don't, yes, there should be links to these sorts of materials, but these materials aren't designed for social media. Um, and if you're gonna really wanna get into social media, you should think about it that way. Now, I agree, start small, I, I don't wanna go huge, but I think there are ways of doing it, like creating templates of what's gonna go up. Um, having shared folders before something goes up, where we all have access to them, like a Google Drive or something.
Then we're violating open meeting law.
Um-
We are getting into, we are, if we're sharing things outside of the meeting, where we're commenting, we are absolutely violating open meeting law, that's the problem.
Well, I look at it similar to doing evaluations. Um, that, the evaluation, and maybe that, that needs to be thought about too.
It does.
But like, um, that, I mean, we, we do the same sort of thing of like, here's an evaluation.
Yeah.
So, maybe that's-
But that, we're probably-
We, we might be violating that.
Yeah.
That technically is supposed to be compiled by, like, a school staff member, not a school committee member, and all the comments, the individual comments are, are public record. So, because we don't have an administrative assistant right now, that's kind of why it's done the way it is, so.
Yeah. But that, that, that's the problem with that, I, I'm not saying I disagree with it, if, if people individually take on to say, like, I'm gonna post my thoughts on this, whatever, and you post it under Jen Linder's personal account, or Jen Linder for school committee, you know, that's what I've done in the past, whatever, but when you, if we create an account that is a school committee, and any one person posts under it, that is a school committee thought, and if we haven't all agreed on that, even if four of us agree on it, like-
Right.
I think it's problematic.
And I, I don't-
As opposed to us, yeah.
Saying.
Yeah.
My, my suggestion, though, is, don't treat this just as, here, it's meeting part-
It's linked to this.
Yeah, it's just a link to the meeting.
Yeah.
Because I don't think, I, I think you actually lose what you're trying to accomplish.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, as opposed to what was done before last town meeting, if the goal was for Tim and I to be able to communicate this in more, I guess, bite-sized pieces that we think are the most, we am saying as a body, are the most relevant to the community, I mean, we can do that, Tim and I talked about, you know, doing a roadshow, not with just him and I, but other people, you know, going to the different parent associations and, and different groups in town, and, and physically going, but again, it's how many people are gonna come to those meetings, and things like that, so, I guess we have to think a little bit more about the, the open meeting law, and that's what, that's what we can-
I think, I think-
We can come back with an actual policy.
I think you can take, like, if you're saying factoids as opposed to the entire presentation.
Yeah.
Then you could take things that are out of the actual presentations.
Oh, yeah.
And, and put that out there, like, again, rather than, like, put the cost of the hood school project, or like, I think anything that is communicated in the public meeting that is a fact that's from there, I think you could take that individual part and put it out there without linking to the whole presentation, so they have to do the whole presentation. I think you can get it down to bite-size.
Well, I think that's kind of the idea of the factoid, that, like, just, just having, and I, I know, I know, I know, it's a slippery slope.
Right.
Because, you know, it can evolve into other things, but if it's just some basic information, like, there, there were folks at that town meeting who weren't aware of basic information.
Right.
And if it could have been snapshot, and you could literally take some of the presentations that we sit here and look at, and put that in a post, and they'll be very useful. The only thing, and you obviously discussed this, that I worry about is, you know, eh, whether it's Facebook or Twitter, that there, that it's, since it's unmonitored, what, what happens there, and I would be very interested what the policy says about that, you know, okay, we're, we're putting this out there, we're sharing it, but, um, that, you know, and then people can share it onto the community page, for example, and then that's gonna get commented.
And even, but even if you couldn't share it, people will take screenshots, it, it will get out.
Right, it will get out.
It's, it's out in the world.
The guidance from MASC is pretty clear, that a, a public body like ours would, in any post, would be usually posted with comments disabled.
Yeah.
Um, actually, the schools are supposed to follow that as well.
Right.
And then, but it's, again-
But it will get out.
If it, but if it, but that's okay, now that's covered by free, and if, if you look at the policy from MASC, that then goes right to free speech, and that's outside of open meeting law, and actually, it's prescribed in the MASC policy. So, that's really the, and that's kind of the, the guidance that you see there, is, you post, and the comment could either be boilerplate, this be here, and here's our next public meeting, if you wanna come make public comment, that was one suggestion that was on the website, and then that way, people know to do that, and then comments are disabled. Now, if somebody shares it, and there's comments on that, that's now subject to free speech, and-
Yeah.
That's what, covered by the United States of Amer- so, that, that scenario is-
But if three of us, but if three of us jump into that discussion, then we have the same issue.
On a specific page.
Yeah.
Yep.
'Cause it'll be dis- the comments will be disabled on-
No, no, but if they, they're saying if they take that and share it like in a different case.
But I guess that's true on anything.
On anything.
Correct, correct, we all have the same issue.
And we, and we hope that they're shared.
Right.
Like, that's the point.
I agree, I agree, and, eh, but this is where, like, the use of the, of the school committee account itself versus our individual ones, we'd be individually commenting on that, the school committee person wouldn't be commenting on that.
The school committee account in the, in this scenario would never make a quote.
To me-
Comment, or quote, whatever you wanna call it, a-
Yeah, to me, the, to me, the line is, to me, the line is, sort of being a reporter versus individual thought. Whereas, like, I think the, uh, the school committee account can be a reporter, it doesn't have to be, here's the whole thing, it can be taking a piece and putting factoids out there from it. It can be one little thing that happened, like, it, it can report on it, but I don't think the school committee account should be an individual thinking outside of this meeting and saying, here's what I think we should do, or, or advocating for a position, or things like that, I think it should be more getting the information into bite-sized pieces that can be used, and to educate the community, to get the information out there that we, that needs to be out there, but without a bias and individual- to get the information out there that we, that needs to be out there, but without a bias, an individual bias from anyone.
Saying the exact same thing.
Right.
Yep.
I'm just saying, but like, that's where it's like, that's what I'm saying, like taking the information from here and getting it out there.
Yeah.
I, I, but i- it's amazing to me how people don't pay attention until it's too late and I think this is the a, a way of sharing bite-sized, like why is, cause you get like, the bus fee goes up a few dollars, whatever, and you get endless comments. It would be really useful to say, the bus fee went up because X, Y, and Z.
Right, you could templatize it as like an FAQ type of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, people can disagree with the fact that the bus fee went up, but they can't disagree with the facts.
Well, you could say the contract is gonna be X percentage more, the school committee voted to, you know, to keep in line with that and that is gonna be the increased cost for next year or something, like a factoid that came from it, but it's not individual commentary on it.
Well, per, but I mean, perhaps one way to completely simplify what we just discussed then, if we're saying that things that are presented at school committee meeting basically could then be distributed because a public meeting already happened and that factoid is out there.
Correct.
Then I think it would just be incumbent on us to work on presenting those things at a school committee meeting and having everybody go, yep, that's the factoid. And then now it's eligible to be placed on social media.
Yeah.
I would argue there were fifteen charts in the budget presentation, like the workshop, that if they were just the, did you know? Snapshot.
Right.
That would, the reach on that would have been significant and that, I guess that's, that was my key takeaway, having come to all the budget hearings in the spring was. I learned an awful lot, but I also knew I was one of the thirty-ish people that came, that largely were the same thirty people that came to every budget hearing, right? And imagine getting that message out to four thousand people, right? That's, that's the kind of reach. And then, maybe we do get more engagement, I know it's late today, but we get more people coming to school committee meetings to ask questions about those facts, which I think is a good, a good thing to have, or to come to a community engagement, or to come to the budget hearings, and we have them in February and March. I think that's really what the, one of the problems that Jennifer and I are trying to solve, cause all is well and good about saying we're gonna reach out to the community and we can go sign up for the activity room in the library for the three people to come, but I think we would love it with forty people and we could really have a discussion about what's coming in and, and like having those people go out to the community and help get that messaging out there. So I think Scott, really, I, I don't think I disagreed with a single thing you just said is that.
Right.
The, the goal of what Jennifer and I are really discussing here is, get those factoids out, do not become a social media brand or platform or page that you're, we're expecting individuals to even comment. That, that would not be the expectation.
Yeah.
It would be, here's the fact, that people share it uh, uh, to the various communities, whether it's hockey or soccer or, or finance committee or community connection, whatever it is, and then let that, that those pieces of information get out there that are based on public meeting.
Right, and it, it's almost like the meeting minutes, you know, to say, you could even say like, school committee voted four to one to increase the bus fee, blah, 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 you know, I mean, but it's like, but it's not, not getting into the argument about why it should be or if it wasn't part of the meeting and that's, that's the thing, I think we just have to tie it to the stuff happening in the meeting really hard, r- really tightly. Cause I think when you get outside of that, that's where you end up an issue, because if you can point back to the public record to say, here it is, it's being shared out there.
I mean, to be candid, I think that we would want any of that information to be shared at a school committee meeting anyways, to make sure there were no questions from the committee members. And I, like, like I said, I think a lot of the fodder comes like, of the top ten things I can think of, most of them were in the, the budget presentation. But they were just in a long budget presentation that required a click to get to the town website and then, then that, 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 then you lose people.
Right.
That is another click to get in the presentation and then you wanna get that slide twenty-three, you're, you've already, you're down to your one percent audience now, right? We wanna get to the ninety percent.
And, and it could also be sharing other public things, like, I was gonna do a post following up on Dr. Daley's post and sharing Dr. Daley's post about the fifteen point five positions that were cut. You know, because there was questions about like, were the positions cut? You know, like I think they could say, you know, here, Dr. Daley explains the fifteen point five positions that were cut as a result of failed override. You know, that's a statement.
Right.
You have the direct thing down there and I think that's, again, it's nothing that was outside of the public. It's just literally sharing, here's where Dr. Daley is sharing this information. You're pulling that factoid out for the person that's just scrolling and just literally sees that one thing, here's the list of the fifteen point five positions that have been cut. Because of the override.
The end.
Right.
Yeah, now we just talked about that, so we can post it now.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think that can be posted, like, and, and I would say even if it's not at a public meeting, something from the superintendent, something from the assistant superintendent, all of those things could be posted as just factual, like, here it is and you're just pulling out one piece of a broader thing.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I, to me, it's the distilling part is where you catch somebody and, and there's there's the pulling out and, and there's the pulling out of that, that factoid and, and putting it on the page, but to me, it's, it's the headline, it's the it's the clickbait elements of it.
Yeah.
Right.
That, that's gotta be tight and accurate and yet point you there, point you in the right direction. And then obviously a link or whatever, but that, that's sort of the easy part. The tough part is that clickbait, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, so if you guys wanna work on the policy and the, and the technical part on like how to create the account even, just so we have that information. And I think we could all, the nice thing about the school committee one is then none of us are individually going on the page and getting assaulted individually. You know, or like.
Stay off.
That's the thing, like. Right, no, but I mean, posting on the community connection page, like, like I, again, the taking Dr. Daley's thing, I was gonna post it on my school committee page, but the two hundred people that like that all agree with that already. You know, and so it's not really changing any minds by me posting it with people that already agree with me.
You're not necessarily changing minds, but you are giving them information that they probably didn't know exactly what the fifteen point five positions were. So then if they know that and then someone else asks, so you're, you know, spreading it.
True.
So I, I mean, I think the proposal here, Scott, would be, go out, you know, Jenny, I can go off of the policy subcommittee, we can certainly start working that and then as part of our goal separately, we can start talking about the mechanics of how you, how you would work the social media to actually do that. But I think, yeah, to be clear, that, that's what you just described is I, I mean, exactly what we've been discussing.
All in agreement pretty much, like, just saying it differently.
I'm fearful, but eh, eh, I'm fearful and I wish it wasn't the case that we needed to do it, but at the same time, we have to be realistic and we have to get the information out.
More information out.
And. Yeah, and it's like, it's great to say, no, this is where we do it for all the people sitting here and frankly, listening. There's nobody in the room right now except for Cindy and us.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, there's a lot of basic stuff that I think that could have gone out that even people today, when I'm talking with them around town, they're still not aware of some of the basics about the town budget from, right? Not the high, not the, the, just the basic, why, why was the town asking for the override? A lot of the basics were not being answered, which means I think we can do more to at least bring a more educated vote. Regardless of the way it goes, at least people will be very, they, they have the ability to be more informed and we can get that, that word out there. And I think that really ties into the goal of what we're trying to accomplish this year.
Yes. Agreed.
So what do we go for? Any thoughts?
What's that?
Dr. Daley, any thoughts?
I do, I, I've shared some with Tim already. I, I think it's just important to keep in mind, I, I agree with having a page to get out information. We did develop some little one-pagers for people. We didn't end up sharing that out, maybe that's something that we should do in the future. We, we, we kinda pulled some of those key points out. I'm very wary of getting too involved in some of those negative comments that might come out. You po- you post something about the administrators and someone copies it and says negative things and you engage in that, it sounds like you're not going to do that and get dragged in, I think. I do think we always should be continuing to return people here. I, I understand where people are, but there's a reason why these laws exist, why we have public forums, public meetings, um, when everybody can be involved in that discussion, it's not one-sided, whoever's just engaging in it and, you know, I, I do hear about people seeing it and more time and people saying that. People look at things at the last minute. The number of texts from people I've got this week about ballot questions on November fifth is through the roof, right? People have been talking about it for months and months and months, so it's, um, you know, I, I would be very careful about what we put out. I kinda like what Scott's saying about being cautious upfront. You know, the, the other thing you hear from people probably more than they didn't hear it is, it's too confusing. I, I don't get it, there's too much, your numbers changed. You put this number out, it was only two hundred, now it's four hundred, yeah, cause it went up, but people don't understand that, so. Starting early also leads to information overload. I hear all the time, it's too complex, it just dumb, you know, just make it more simple, just what we need to know, so I think you just gotta be cautious and careful about what's permitted and get people to watch those videos where we explain it. And the other thing is, there's an opportunity for questions and dialogue and going deeper, so. Don't get too caught up in, in that, you know, I'd be, I look at other districts around that have done this. I don't know that there's a huge difference, I, I, I hope there is, you know, it's great. I think the, the presence alone though is a good step forward and there's no way around that, just, I'm very cautious about getting dragged into debate because unfortunately, I don't think a lot of discussions on social media are meant to become more informed. I think they're too.
Yeah.
I think they're too engaged in arguments and I don't wanna see us get dragged in there. I don't wanna see us get dragged into a, well, you, you know, the school committee official page posted about this, but they didn't post about that. That's why we've stayed away from it for so long. We've used Twitter, no follow only, um, because we didn't wanna get involved in that back and forth because of, because of that reason. And if people wanna have a back and forth, this is the way to do it and we do it, they could do it online, we've made it really easy. I mean, we talked about, oh, if we do virtual and we have hybrid, we're gonna get hundreds of people and it's so much easier and nobody's coming to the conversations. And if they really wanted to discuss it, if I, if I did something tomorrow, if I went on there and said, we're cutting, we're cutting uh, football, this room would be packed. So I'm telling you, the reason why people aren't getting engaged and they're not voting, it didn't impact them, there wasn't a value, they didn't see it.
For the record, we're not. Yeah, for the social media people, we're not actually cutting football, don't put that as.
We're not cutting ban, no, nowhere have we ever said that, yet it's above the fold in the transcript that they're, they're concerned about ban, so we have to address those things. People are finding their own inroads to be concerned about things. So I think it's important to get out there, but I also think people need to come to the proper channels, they need to put in, if they really wanna understand, they need to watch the meetings, they need to, to review, you know, I'm not saying these meetings necessarily, but if we have an informational forum and they're recorded and they're on every channel, people should be investing a little bit more time, cause it, it matters, you know?
Like you were saying about the ballot questions, like, people don't wanna understand until it's like the day before town meeting and then they're like, oh, let me learn all, you know?
But they can, they can still watch those videos at that time, so I, I'm just, my point is like, be careful too of starting too early. I hear all that, cause we're also getting a lot of pushback about, why are we talking about this now? We don't even have numbers yet, we don't have this or that, so there is that delicate balance of getting information out and then making sure it's the right information that tells the story we need to tell, so.
I think, I think another piece of the policy could be adding an agenda item towards the end of the meeting where we talk about what to post from it.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking about that too.
So then we could actually have it and say, okay, here are the things we wanna make sure we get out from this meeting, you know, can we? And we put like, you know, we can kinda just go around and have a discussion, like what was important, like, oh, can you do this or whatever?
Yeah.
We can do it right in here, I mean, and just say, it'll add another five minutes to say, like, here's the summary of this, but.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll only be five minutes.
These are the things.
Let's just don't do that tonight.
I'll share the example from my town and I, I'm not a hundred percent sure how it works, I can definitely inquire. I don't know that they have a s- uh, I don't know that they have a school committee page for Masco, I think they have a public relations subcommittee and that subcommittee is what posts. And so in that respect, you could have, you're not really representing the whole committee, you're representing the subcommittee and, and they're, most of what they post though is about, here's what's coming up at the next meeting, here, we want to get you engaged and, but there might be some links or factoids similar to, to what you're talking about. But there might be a little bit of a workaround of that idea that it's like, I'm, this group is speaking for the whole and you might be able to act faster than trying to get consensus from five people for something, so that's a thought we could look into.
And that's just, yeah, the biggest challenge of that is then we're, then we're getting into, who do we put in that position and if they have different thoughts, then we end up getting like, well, I don't agree with Jen on this issue, you know, and Jen's the one posting it out there and so.
That's why.
Judge usually right.
It's tricky. I'm a big fan of the, i- if we can get a policy in a way that it's fact, the, the goal of this is really fact, you know, fact and factoid based. Use the information that we have, it is not, so we, and certainly we can take this offline in the policy subcommittee and have those more detailed discussions. I just, we were looking to get the, where's, where's the, what is the, the feeling of the overall committee? Cause we wanna bring something to policy that, like the meeting that, that looks like it's gonna work.
Matter of how we do it.
Right. If you wanna do the factoids, it has to be the whole group, cause if you have someone on the committee who is against the override or is again, thinks the class size is too, too big, as is.
Right.
Is that the factoid that gets out, you know, so.
And I think the good thing about, we talk about factoids, it's like, you know, we say we're early in the cycle, which is true, but there are a lot of things that are not budget related that could start, you could start that momentum now, of people understanding basics about the school district. It doesn't need, not everything needs to definitely be dollars and cents, there's a lot of other information out there that is useful. That I think the community would be really well-suited to understand going into, to budget season.
I mean, the other, the other part is, even if at the very, very basic level, every time you post on Monday morning or Sunday night about the next meeting with the, with a link to the agenda and how to, how to attend, maybe we'll get more people coming.
Yeah.
You know, like, even if you just, if that was just a very basic thing, like you're gonna say, here's the agenda, no comment on it, you don't know what's on there yet, you know, but you just say, here's a link to the agenda, here's how you attend the meeting if you wanna attend tomorrow. Maybe you'll start getting people coming and then we add to the, at, to the end, here's what we wanna get out from this meeting for sure.
Yeah, and I mean, and you can do a social media calendar where you already have your, your posts like set to go and then we, you know, space them out between now and the next meeting.
Yeah. I never wanna be on this committee, so I'm on the subcommittee side.
I mean, I, I forget who said it's, it's, it's become a necessary evil, but in, in really thinking about it over the last seven, eight weeks and seeing how people are responding a- at various meetings, i- it's become kind of clear to me that it's probably a necessary.
I think so.
cautious.
Yeah, and you're saying it's early, but I, I know I'm already getting questions about what's gonna happen next year.
Yeah, I don't think it's early.
And to me, it's not early or late, it's just what is the information, what's happening right now? For example, we just talked about the need to do a building project at the hood school and how many people heard about it? Nobody, you know, or very few people. Janelle, you heard about it.
Other than heard it.
Right, but like, but that's the thing, like just information. We're gonna talk in a minute about finance subcommittee and what our rev- rev- revenue projections are for next year. You know, that's gonna be a fact that we will say, I will put it out there and that's where we are at, at this moment, you know? The fifteen point five positions, knowing that they were cut. This is what it is, you know, um, I mean, basic information like, if you have a four hundred person company or school district, you're gonna expect about five to ten percent to turn over every year. So when you see new positions, that doesn't mean they're new positions, it, it just means replacing, because typically in four hundred people, you're gonna expect twenty to forty people to leave every year, you know, and you have to refill those same positions and so, yeah. Okay, so I think, I think time is of the essence, so if you guys can work on a, a draft policy of that, I think the more it's just sort of sticking to, like I said in the very beginning, sticking to what it is, but not just posting the whole thing, just breaking it down, but I think we don't want individual thought coming from this, we want it to be really tied to what we're talking about here. And, yeah, and, and, yeah, and we should, we can all also, maybe the policy talks, I don't know if the policy talks about individually what we can and can't do also, but.
It's separate pol- uh, we, so the, there already is policy and we, we can dust that off as part of the policy, so there, that already exists.
Okay.
Um, yeah, like I'll say, there is no shortage of resources on MASC about this, so we can take a look at that over the next several weeks. Get with uh, Dr. Daley and the policy subcommittee and really talk about the nuts and bolts as to what it could look like. I think this is helpful, this discussion was helpful to understand where the overall committee was willing to go at this point in time, cause this is a very touchy subject for many, right? So, um, some people don't wanna touch social media with a ten-foot pole, others are in it for, like I said, more than two hours a day. So where can we find that middle ground that can allow information to be disseminated? And, and, and actually, while I'm saying this too, as part of our goal, if there's other ways that you can think of, really, we're thinking reach, how do you get to reach? Right, and obviously, social media is a well-hanging fruit there. Is there other, right, the, the obvious one is the transcript, right? The transcript has reach, well, we already have that.
Yeah.
Social media is the next one. Is there, are there other areas of reach that maybe we're not considering that we should be, right?
I mean, and, and even within like the transcript, for example, like I wrote a letter to the editor last year. I specifically did not sign as a school committee member, but the editor put in a note that I was, put in a note that I was, you know, a school committee member, because I didn't wanna sign on behalf of the school committee, because I, I'm, I'm not speaking on, on your behalf if I write a letter to the editor, you know, individually. But I think it's good for people to know I am a member of the school committee, but I'm not signing it that way.
Very clever of you.
So, I mean, you could say in there like, I am a member of the school committee, but I'm writing individually, but. So, I mean, you could say in there like, I am a member of the school committee, but I'm writing individually, but blah, blah, blah. Yeah. Social media is good and bad, but it is what it is. And you can comment on my new puppy. I'm there all you want, but other than that. Okay. I don't think we're voting on anything specifically today. I would say there's no policy specifically to vote on.
No, there's nothing. No, that was just more for to drive this discussion, right?
Right. No, it's a good point because it does say vote on there, but, um, I don't think there's anything to vote on right now. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tim and Jen for bringing it and
Yeah, thank you for that work.
That was awesome.
Well, well considered.
Something.
Just generally for everybody here, because we all have different projects that we're working on. If you want something on the agenda, the agenda has to be posted forty-eight hours early and you got it on social media.
Saturday and Sunday don't count.
What's that?
Saturday and Sunday don't count.
And Saturday and Sunday don't count for that. It has to be forty-eight hours before. So Dr. Daley typically is trying to post like a week before. So if you want things on, make sure you do lots of attention. I think our, our policy says you can either send it to the superintendent or to the chair who will send it to the superintendent. Ideally, if you could just copy both of us, that way, because we're usually talking about what's gonna be on the agenda. But the sooner you can get it out, the better so that we can have it on there. Routine matters, minutes. It leaves us in minutes.
Oh, wow.
Um, move to approve the minutes from September ninth, um, two thousand twenty-four, open session as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Move to approve the minutes from the open session on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as written.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Move to approve the minutes from the October seventh, twenty twenty-four, meeting, um, open session as written.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Uh, budget update? None at this time? Mr. Connolly? Staffing, Dr. Daley?
Do you have, um, Irene Mahoney was hired as a long-term substitute for grade one. Amy Rodriguez hired as a long-term substitute guidance counselor at the high school. We had the following, retirement's resignations. Um, Barbara Papa Giorgio retiring, proud professional general. Um, we'll have her back in the spring. Um, to celebrate her, her career here. Emma Wood, a long-term substitute grade one, and then Ms. Kelly Wilson, food services.
And so just to clar, clarify, a long-term sub means there's an existing position that is open and we're hiring somebody to go into that position. Just for the record.
For the long term.
For the long term. Thank you, Dr. Daley. Um, bids and donations?
Sure. The school committee, uh, uh, I moved that the, the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from the North Running, uh, from the North Running Middle School Parent Association to be used toward busing for the grade eight field trip.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents from the Bachelor Parent As, uh, Organization to be used toward the grades three through five field trip to Gillette Stadium.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Is this the one where they're like packing up the stuff? Shouldn't they be paying us to? Okay.
I think the Patriots play this year, right? You think?
I know. This is what it's down to.
I was gonna say, it looks like the Patriots get, you know, child labor to pack their buses.
I'm just, I'm just saying, maybe. Uh, I vote that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of seven thousand dollars from Chuck Carucci uh, in the Hornet Hall of Fame to be used toward the bleacher project at the high school.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from John and Kim Crowley to be used tor, uh, to be put toward the district-wide fund to be used where it's needed most.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I have one more here.
Uh, I vote that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude, a gener, uh, generous in-kind donation in, uh, the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars from Mary Ann and Michael Murray for North Running High School's band and chorus department.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I, I could, Mr.,
Yes.
I just, you know, I had pulled this back. This was slated to go on in August. I wanted to understand a little bit better about the, the history behind some of this and we really appreciate this donation.
Okay. Wonderful. Do you want to explain the history at all or not? I guess I know.
A little, a little bit. Uh, I, I, I will just say that, you know, this is typically something that the schools will, um, support and will continue to support. Varsity, these are varsity letters for band and chorus. It's not something that, um, we should need a donation for, in my opinion.
Okay.
But there are other priorities at the time and so this is now going to be something that the school will support moving forward. But we really appreciate the donation.
Absolutely.
Really generous.
Yeah.
Thank you. At the end of the bids and donations?
Yep.
Um, and then, just, yeah, bids and donations. Grants? We have one grant?
There is, uh, I just gotta get back there.
We've rece, we've received the Safe and Supportive Schools.
Supportive Schools, ten thousand dollars, uh, grant there. And this, this, uh, work is described here. Help us organize, integrate, sustain school and district-wide efforts to create safe and supportive school environments. This is, uh, I have a small team with Cynthia Clonan, Michael Rosa, Kathy O'Connell. We're gonna look at having, uh, at least a couple of representatives from each school participate in ten hours worth of, uh, training and then we're gonna have it opened up to anyone else who's interested. Do some additional training about safe and supportive schools. Um, and this is everything from, um, some of the work, coordinates for some of the work we're doing around, um, diversity. It also talks about mental health, wellness, it's kind of the whole gamut. It's a really great toolkit. Might even involve us using some kind of a self-reflection tool for, and a survey tool, um, to collect more information from our, our students and our parents about how they feel the schools can be more safe and supportive. So it's a Department of Ed grant. And we really feel this is a great tool and it's an opportunity for us to have some funds to help compensate those that are taking the time to explore.
So we need a motion to accept the grant.
Move to accept the, um, Safe and Supportive Schools grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We, we have multiple other grants that are just waiting final approval. So as soon as those come out, we'll get them, but they are, uh, you've been busy with those as well.
Excellent. Um, we did the overnight trip request and unless there's any others? I don't think so. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team met on October fourth and October twenty-fifth. I and Mr. Freedom will provide an update.
I do.
I don't remember October fourth. I think that was before town meeting.
Yeah.
So we discussed what was gonna happen at town meeting and then everything was a show at town meeting. So, um, we, October twenty-fifth, we talked mostly about FY twenty-six and an early revenue, um, projection. The good news is last year when we were looking at numbers, we were anticipating a drastic shortage of free cash. Because if everybody recalls, a lot of times we are funding some of this year's budget from free cash from last year. Um, and the concern was with cutting budgets down, that we were gonna not have enough free cash to do that. The good news is there are other sources of free cash that came in and so we're in a better position than we were expecting. With that all being said, the amount of, if we pull all of the levers that we pull, you know, by the end of the budget season, basically that increase only covers the fixed cost off the top. Because fixed costs are gonna be so much higher next year. And so that means we are looking at a revenue plan showing the town and school side getting nothing more than we're getting this year. And so that's the problem where we're at, or maybe one percent more or something like that. I mean, depends on what numbers we use. So again, that's an early project, which is actually a somewhat positive update compared to where we were before. We need to figure out what our numbers are for this year and that's sort of where we left it. The other big news from that is we did mention, I think Jeff might have mentioned how useful the all-town, all-boards meeting was last year. And so I think we are proposing to try to do that. It won't be all boards. Um, it will be primarily the school committee, the select board and the finance committee coming together for a meeting and you see under future business. We have a couple of dates identified, Wednesday, December fourth or Wednesday, December eleventh. And the idea would be really just to get information out and share the revenue plan with all the boards early on and just show this is where we're at. We haven't started going through and seeing if revenue projections are reasonable or not, but just to keep everybody on the same page early on.
And the structure of that meeting is still being discussed about, you know, how do, how do we have public comments or not, or what's going on? But the, the main goal is let's start communicating early and often.
Yeah. I mean, the consensus was they want me talking about ninety percent of the time and everybody else gets one question or so, a comment, but
Surprise.
Uh, no, I'm just kidding. It just turned into that, so. Fine Arts Subcommittee met on October sixteenth. Um, Mrs. Rudolph let me alone on that one. The most awkward possible timing of a meeting since they had had callbacks the night before. And they hadn't announced who had gotten what positions and I got to sit with everybody making those decisions, but, um, that meeting was really just, a lot of it was just talking about trying to figure out a way to present new positions and to look at the stipends. Because for athletics, it's a very clear process to, if you need to add another coach, if you need to add an assistant coach. We don't have any of that on the fine arts time, um, aside. And during the negotiations, a lot of that got kicked down the road. Now we're down the road, so we're gonna kick it back to the person who negotiated the, uh, the contract, I think. To potentially try to help work on that. Um, but that's where a lot of the discussion was about is like, not, not do we need this position or do we want this position, but like, how should this position be compensated? If we need a new position, how should it be presented? And we just don't have any of the structure there. And so that's really being developed. And I don't think it's a fine arts subcommittee group that should be doing that. I think it has to go back to the union contract. And so we need to, it needs to go back to the negotiating board, I believe. What was the group, the subgroup?
Labor and Labor Management Group.
Sorry.
We'd like to meet soon and try to resolve. But the hard part is obviously that these, some of these proposals, people are already in the roles or things are already happening. And I, I understand that's the right thing for kids is to get them going as soon as possible. The problem is we didn't come to agreement in, in the spring. We put it to a JLMC and we need to still figure it out, you know?
Yeah. So they need to schedule that meeting sooner rather than later. Um, Jeff, I hope you are open to continuing that role a little bit because
Yeah, that's fine. So we're, I'll reach out. We'll get something going very soon.
Absolutely.
Okay. Substance Abuse Coalition, I don't think we made that one. So subcommittee schedule, um, financial planning team is scheduled to meet on November fifteenth at eight fifteen AM. Substance Abuse Coalition is scheduled to meet November twenty-fifth at ten AM. Administrative report, Dr. Daley?
None at this time.
None at this time. Correspondence, none at this time. Future business, we have a meeting on November twenty-fifth at six thirty PM. We also have a meeting on December ninth at six thirty PM. And also noted as a possibility of December fourth or December eleventh for a joint meeting with the select board and finance committee and school committee. Do, do any of you know, do either of those work better than others?
I'm out of town on December fourth.
Yeah, I'm potentially out on the fourth as well, so.
And the fourth didn't work as well for me personally. I can make it work if I need to, but, um,
Which one didn't work well for you?
December fourth, eh, the same one as them.
So we all feel the eleventh is better?
The eleventh is better on our end, it sounds like.
My travel's not settled, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but
Two would most likely not be there. Um, one doesn't want to miss something, but I will if I need to.
We're totally, um, we're, we're, um, holding the room for both nights, but we can go back to the larger
Yeah, we can share that with finance. Share that with, share that with finance planning team.
Yep.
That is it. There's nothing else. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.